Cut that to him.
This is end of time.
The time is now seven P M. On Monday. September fifteenth, twenty twenty five, and I call the planning board meeting to session. First, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Robertson, please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will now take planning board attendance. Uh, Mr. Sumaya.
Here.
Mr. Drew.
Yeah.
Ms. Henderson. Ms. Henderson, uh, just have to call her out, but she is absent tonight, and it is a, um, excused absence. And Mr. Robertson.
Here.
Mr. Trebu.
Here.
Mr. Ventreska.
Bro.
And Mr. Parker is here. Okay, uh. First thing we do is open microphone, so if there's anybody here to speak about anything that is not on the agenda. You're certainly welcome to speak if you want, it's on the agenda, but once the agenda item comes up, I'm gonna open it up to the floor anyways and allow everybody to speak on that item. Uh, so if you just hear about any old item, feel free to step up to the mic, or if you just wanna speak. And then also online, if you are attending by Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to speak at open mic. So we'll give them a second. We have any Zoom hands?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
And so we will, uh, turn this over to Mr. Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, first item on the agenda is a site plan for one seventy six Boston Road, uh, the public hearing is open.
Right.
Good evening, Chris Borels from G P I. The town. There, can you hear me? Is it good? Yep, green lights on, yep. Uh, good evening, Chris Borels from G P I on behalf of the town. Um, here for, uh, one seventy six Boston Road, um, continued from last week. Um, I had said when I walked up, I can show the plans if you'd like to see them again. Uh, we continued last week for, we were waiting on the peer review, um, review of the comments, uh, my understanding is they sent the town an email, uh, today, um, or Friday, saying that they were, uh, okay with the comments with except, with the exception of one of them about the separation from, um, building and from the infiltration system. Um, I haven't heard back on that part, but I do know that that was a comment that the, um, the town stormwater engineer had called out in their original, um, comment letter and said it was waived, um, due to, uh, site constraints. So my assumption would be, um, that, you know, that would be the case as well. Um, and I also know that we received stormwater from the stormwater engineer, some comments this afternoon. Um, which I know that she had indicated that. Uh, we could address after, um, the planning board approval if necessary. Um, I have actually addressed them, I did actually reply with an email, um, late in the day, um, addressing them. Um, which is probably too late, but the, I can go over the comments quickly. They were just, um, updating a catch basin detail to provide a, a hood in the, in the, um, catch basin detail, which, which we've done. Um, as well as there's a, a manhole, um, adjacent to the infiltration system that's a little deeper for maintenance, um, to collect sediment, which we added an elevation to the actual manhole on the plan. And then the operation and maintenance plan, uh, which is a document for maintaining the drainage systems, um, referenced a, uh, item that wasn't not wa, was not in the project, and so we, we, um, removed reference to that. Um, those were the remaining items that the, um, town stormwater engineer had, had pointed out. Um, so, uh, I guess with that, I can open it to any, uh, questions, and I can show the plan if I, if requested as well.
Think we're good on the plans right now? Think it was just, uh, dotting the i's and crossing the t's, so. I'll go to any of the board members, have any final questions, Tony? Chris?
All set.
Good?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, just thank you very much for coming back this week, and I do appreciate the fact that we are taking the time to make sure that we are uh, following procedure and crossing the i's and dotting the t's, and I'm ready to support this, thank you.
Mr. Sumaya?
I'm all set, thank you.
I too am happy with, uh, uh, the back and forth, uh, you know, comments and, and, uh, answers and, um, if it's left to a simple O N M, which, you know, you guys will revise and that will be uh, reviewed by our staff and, uh, other people at another point. I think that, uh, I'm ready to move forward, and I'll just, uh, look down to our staff real quick and, uh, make sure we're get the thumbs up, and just wanna review any outside, uh, outside of our standard conditions, do we have any, uh, we, I know we're waving to the two trees and like the back.
Yes, the two trees was a waiver request as well as the separation, um, in driveway with, between the, um, two driveways.
So, uh, before we close the public hearing, uh, if there's anybody here that would like to speak on the, uh, new fire station being built on Boston Road, please, uh, feel free to step up microphone, if you're online, you can raise your hand. Otherwise, once I get Drew, we don't have any hands online.
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Great.
For that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on one seventy six Boston Road.
Okay.
Motion seconded to close the public hearing. Mr. Ventreska?
Aye.
Mr. Trebu?
Aye.
Mr. Sumaya?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Drew?
Aye.
And I am a yes.
It's no one on Zoom, you don't have to. No one on Zoom.
Oh.
After we'll call.
You can, but you don't have.
Apologies, we'll, we'll speed those, uh, votes up, thank you, Mr. Drew. Um, and so.
So Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the waiver, uh, two waivers waving two trees as we discussed and separation between the two driveways as, as also discussed. Should I do the waivers first?
I can.
Well, you made a motion to agree on those waivers and Evans has seconded, so let's, uh, just make it formalized and then we can, uh, make the final motion for the approval. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Sumaya?
I may yes.
Mr. Drew?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Mr. Trebu?
Yep.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There we go. All right.
Chairman, I'll make a.
If you're still having someone online.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, site plan special permit for one seventy six Boston Road, the fire station.
Okay.
Hey, I got a second from Mr. Sumaya. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Unanimous six zero vote for our new fire station, thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
Night. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Uh, Mr. Lulumi Amis, please. No.
Mr. Chairman, next item on the agenda is a public hearing for B two subdivision three oh five Concord Road. Make a motion open the public hearing.
Second. Doing some signature.
Second.
All those in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is open. So the petitioner, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, good evening, members of the board, my name's Jonathan Silverstein, I am the uh, applicant's counsel, this matter is indicated on the notice is before the planning board. Um, now for the third time pursuant to a agreed upon remand from the land court. The, uh, proposal is essentially a lot split, it was authorized by a variance, uh, frontage variance, um, issued by the zoning board of appeals. That was upheld, uh, both in, um, the Superior Court and the Appeals Court. Uh, and subsequent to that, uh, the lots split came before the board. Although most lot splits are, um, come before you as A and Rs, this couldn't because, uh, by definition, it doesn't have sufficient frontage under the zoning bylaw, so it had to be done as a B two subdivision application. The board denied the, uh, prior application for one stated reason only, which was that the, uh, proposed plan did not, in the board's view, comply with section one C of the subdivision rules. Which requires a fifty foot layout for access to subdivisions, um, that provision states at the beginning, private driveways, easements or rights of way and all other substandard ways of access must be enlarged to a minimum layout width of fifty feet. So, uh, I think the clear intent of this and consistent with the purpose of the subdivision control law is that it's talking about access roads that are providing access to the subdivision. As opposed to what was proposed here, which was a subdivision lot, which, uh, would not have a driveway to the individual house on the lot. That was fifty feet wide, I think everyone can agree that most residential driveways are not fifty feet wide. And then in fact, there's no such thing as a layout for, uh, individual driveway and that the reference to private driveways in the subdivision rules was really intended to address access roads, private access drives, uh, that were gonna provide access to more than one lot. That being said, uh, rather than go through years more litigation where everyone spends a lot more time and money. Uh, we proposed and, um, it was agreed and the land court issued, uh, an order for us to present a somewhat revised subdivision plan, which is up, uh, in front of you, and basically what this does is it, uh, expands the, um, quote unquote, layout of the driveway to lot one by providing an easement for access purposes over lot two, so that there is now a minimum width, uh, of the uh, available layout of a driveway of fifty feet, so that were the, um, subdivision rules and regulations interpreted to require that every individual lot have a driveway of fifty feet, um, that lot one could in fact comply with that. And that's real, it's as simple as that, seemed like a straightforward way to address the concern raised in the planning board's decision, the, um, remand, uh, order from the court limits this remand, uh, hearing solely to that one issue of compliance with section one C and the fifty foot layout provision in that section. Uh, so, the scope of this hearing is really just for the board to look at this one change and, uh, make a determination regarding compliance with that one provision of the subdivision rules and regulations, so. With that, I'll rest, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, but we're hopeful that this, uh, ends this very long saga for everybody.
So, uh, go around to the board men, uh, members, uh, start with Mr. Ventreski, you are new to the board on this application per se. So, any questions?
We're limited to basically this one change that he's showing there now, which is basically a driveway.
So I could, uh, explain it, maybe Catherine could elaborate it on.
But I'm just saying, what, all we can really discuss tonight is the drive, basically driveway.
Because that was how we determined it to, uh, be denied the previous time, and they have fixed that issue.
Okay.
Um, that's the part of the court remand.
Okay, so with that being said, does this meet our bylaws? Presented?
Its intent does meet the subdivision rules and regulations. Yes.
So that's it, thank you.
Mr. Sumaya?
Well, thank you, Chair, um, this, it's been a long, um, process with this project, um. I mean, as I said last time, I don't, I think this has met the requirement and the intent, so I don't think I have, um, an issue with it or have questions.
Mr. Robertson?
I thank you, Mr. Chair, um, sadly, I guess I'll have to disagree with my two prior folks and maybe others on the board. Um, I, uh, understand, uh, that easements are for use only. Um, and they don't provide any dimensional relief. So our, our regulation is very clear, fifty feet for the layout. We still have only forty feet max for the layout, we don't comply, it didn't solve the problem, unfortunately. Um, the easy solution is come in with a new line on the new, new property line that has fifty feet, and it's a slam dunk. But I don't know why there's such reticence to come in and make that fix. But, uh, anyway, so I, I, it doesn't comply, doesn't meet the requirement, it's an easement. No, thank you.
Mr. Trebu?
I mean, the horse, the horse has been dead for a while and it's been beaten pretty severely, so it could be make, make glue out of it, but, um, I don't have anything else to say, no, it's all good.
Drew?
I have no questions, thank you.
And, uh, I don't have any additional questions myself. Um, Catherine, Jane, any input for the board?
Absolutely, so this is a fresh public hearing, because we've been through this once, because it's a remand, you know what you're looking for, you know what the revised map is now addressing as far as that section C of your subdivision rules, the access to subdivisions, the attorney already spoke on it a bit where the letter of the law says driveways, whether that was intended or not, so they're, they're following that. Um, just to reiterate, it says private driveways, easements or rights of way and all other substandard ways of access must be enlarged to a minimum layout width of fifty feet. So it looks like they've done that, it's still a full public hearing, so I'll, we'll leave you guys to the rest of it.
Uh, so anybody on Zoom that would like to speak on this, uh, particular hearing, now would be the time to raise your hand. Uh, and I will also open it up to the audience, so, um, just to keep in orderly fashion, yep, uh, we'll Ed? Name and address for the records.
She counts, uh, sixteen Fawn Lane, I'm directly behind the property. Um, I, um, I do not understand why it is a legal requirement for the builder to send certified letters to the abutters if we are not considered in any of the town's proceedings and permits related to this property. We have all been against this project from the beginning, we have come out every time there's a request for further permits. We have come out every time to request the consideration for the fact that our neighborhood was built on a swamp and the builders clear cutting of the trees and pushing the house back as far as possible will and has affected us with an increase in water in all of our homes. It was not required that he invite the people several houses away from us, further down the hill, who are having situations of their basement being flooded where they have never had this happen before. If you allow him to split the lot and build another house, we will get even more water. He has already benefited from getting to build a two-family house when only a one-family house was ever zoned for that land. Please consider the concerns of us, the neighbors, which the law has required we be notified so we can bring our concerns and do not split this lot. Yes, please end this saga by voting no.
Anybody in the first row, I was gonna go by rows, but second row?
My name's Virginia Musker, director abutter, and I know that you said I should have gotten these, but I didn't get them on, and I think Tony has the right to see them. You are my new board member. This is thirty of my two hundred photos of the flooding on my property, some of it is going through my property. Taking my bath mats to my neighbor across the street and then flooding the neighbors on the first house on Doe Drive. So we did get some in the first thing, and I'm going to give you a copy for you, if you have enough ink. Share that, I believe you ask the secretary to put this. Chair, and I will speak quickly. I was very impressed with what you said, although none of it's true, cuz you can't grant an easement on a non-conforming lot to another non-conforming lot to try to make it, Mr. Robertson is a hundred percent correct. For the new board members, Tony, this is mostly for you because you weren't involved. When he demolished the historical property due to a Scribner error, it was his responsibility, Mr. Noonan, to check with both boards, not the town. Um, not the, I'm sorry, not the building inspector, not his problem, he only checks the town. He tears down the building and that's when the flooding starts. I've been in the house forty-two years, never had water. Now, we've been in a two-year drought, so of course they'll say, well, you don't have water now, he's right, we haven't had rain. But when the rain and when we get snow, those photos are showing you what is happening to the property. The young woman that's standing in the boots is right there, and the measurements are correct, that is between my property and hers, along with my back. Um, there's also, I believe, the picture got left in the car of my tree, that was like this when the flooding started, and now it's like. Um, okay, so I'm gonna do this quickly, after he received his permits, um, to split non-conforming lot into two non-conforming lots, now he's granting himself an easement, still non-conforming, you can't do that. He is doing what is known in the law as trespassing on my property, the water from three oh five Concord Road is flooding to my property. And then it goes to the right and the left to my neighbors on both sides and my neighbor across the street and the neighbor behind her house. The photos clearly admit they were not admissible to the court, because Mr. Noonan said I should have delivered them when I filed, they had not happened yet. This is over twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And although the planning board understood the issues and the vote was a tie. I knew we'd be back here, but most importantly, the issue of three oh five Concord Road is what is known as infectious invalidity. This board member clearly stated, which for some reason isn't in the minutes, you never got an answer for what infectious invalidity meant from the previous attorney. Which is a great, why are we doing this? Because when you take a non-conforming lot and you split it. The original lot be, is now still non-conforming and you're making another non-conforming. And if you ask any building inspector in any of these surrounding towns, infectious invalidity, it should have been thrown out in the beginning because you're taking a non-conforming lot, splitting it, making another non-conforming lot, which makes both lots unbuildable. He is called doing now what's called nuisance trespassing. His water is flowing to my property, I have fallen in my own yard trying to fill the bird feeders. Because mass law clearly states infectious invalidity, the doc, the doctrine of property law that provides under the defined circumstances. One action being improper, the other action becomes invalid. In zoning laws, infectious invalidity is the principle where a parcel of land that itself complies with zoning requirements, which three oh five Concord did not in the beginning, because it was never a conforming lot, three and a quarter acres, non-conforming, no frontage across the whole lot. Three oh five did not ever conform with that, it is considered to be in violation of the zoning laws of the state because of circumstances of the creation. The situation arises when that parcel of land was improperly divided into two lots, resulting in one of the new lots conforming and then eat, granting that easement to make the other one conforming, it is not, both are invalid. And technically, when I win the next lawsuit, which I will, he's going to be tearing that house down. And then all those trees are going back. So I will conclude by saying, all this is being said, the developer knows what he's doing, he knew what he was doing when he by-skirted to tear down that historical home. I'm asking the board tonight to withhold your vote until the new town attorney can review the infectious invalidity issue that never went to the first att, attorney, that previous secretary never gave it to him, this gentleman clearly stated. I have to vote with the builder because we never got an answer to whether infectious invalidity involves this lot, so I'm asking you to withhold the vote. The developer may say there's no water and he's right, because for the last year and a half, I can't even water my plants, we are in a statewide drought. The minute the rains come back, the minute the snow comes, we will be buried again. And I am also asking you to please do not allow Mr. Drew to vote. It is a conflict of interest. He went to his daughter's potty for her new condo and didn't.
Bought a condo when it was her closing that day and I decided to be with my daughter, I was a father.
You're a father, Kelly Giroux was on vacation in California and called in her vote, no excuse, you have a duty.
Ma'am.
She wasn't here, sorry.
Don't call out individual people.
I still don't believe, and I'm gonna sit down, you don't have the right to vote, conflict of interest, your wife voted in the very first board that started this mess.
You're absolutely wrong.
Your job is to protect the residents, and in doing so, you will follow the law in Massachusetts and uphold the bylaws of the town of Billerica. And I have many more, and here's the email, if you'd like a copy of, when I was notified from my, that the land was built on the tributaries from Nunnies Lake, he is building on a swamp, and that's why he can't give you. He can't give you the easement for the right thing, because the land is a swamp.
And I do it again.
Okay, we already know your vote.
Now you do.
Okay, I'm sorry, you don't like, he never got an edge.
I met you.
I need everybody to take a step back. Ms. Mustard, this is Mustard.
No, I call out my daughter.
Please.
Bring my daughter into this.
Don't hit.
Don't, yes, you did, you said it.
Your job was to.
Not threatening my daughter. For her.
We apologize to the board, that is a lie, he knows, he's nobody's.
Please, Ms. Mustard.
I have. Not personally, but I've known of you.
Um. Anybody else in the audience that would like to speak? Name and address for the, uh, for the record, please.
Paul Marasco, three eleven Concord Road. This project certainly didn't start off right. And it's really not ending right. So I'm an abutter to the south. And I am looking at this massive structure, I think everyone can see it from Concord Road when you drive by. I'm a lot closer, my house is I don't know, sixty feet, seventy feet away from it, so I look at this massive wall. Now, I know it's a public hearing. Uh, and you did say it was a new public hearing. So trying to make the best of what we have. I would like the board, and I sent a letter to the board, does everyone, did everyone receive it? So, something should be done about what I'm looking at, and if it can be done through screening, some type of vegetation, something that grows very tall. Um, I look at basically two sides of that structure. So what you all see from that road when you drive by it, I'm up close to that. So I, um, talked to the proponent today, he had no landscaping plan in effect. Um, I'm looking for this board to put something as a condition to screen me. It may also help with the water conditions. Uh.
In the future.
In the future. I've seen the water conditions to talk about that just briefly, it, it's a serious problem, these people have been, uh, impacted, their property, um, is severely impacted. Their property is severely impacted across, across the street, too. So it didn't start out right. And these, the, the boards really need to consider the residents when they make their decisions. This is basically a flag lot. I don't know if everyone saw it, but the design is a flag lot. It's really not a lot that we all want to see in a, in a residential, a rural residential area. Because then you're going to just, and, and I know it wasn't this board that did that decision, but these lots, they're really not encouraged in, in many towns because you're just then becoming overdeveloped in rural residential areas. So consider what also Mr. Robertson said. It, it, it really is an easement and not a lot that has the frontage. So it's really pretty sad where we are right now with these problems that the boards can create, not looking at the total impact of their decisions. So if we can try to make the best of what we've got right now, screening could help me as a condition, a very heavy condition, and maybe even a stronger landscaping plan throughout the property might also help with the water. If Mrs. Musker isn't successful in whatever her future path is, try to make the best to help this water mitigation. The lot used, used to be, I don't know if anyone is familiar with the lot or drove by it, was heavily wooded, and it was really, it, it, just unbelievable when you clearcut a lot. You change, you've changed the water, the landscape, everything is flowing, of course, downhill. So maybe putting back something also might help mitigate if, if it just can't, if you can do that, put, put it back, at least something the way it was. And that might be helpful, too, with some of the water. So please consider my letter and my ask as a condition to try to screen me. I know you can do it. Screen me and then add some vegetation to try to mitigate some of this water for our neighbors who abut also the property. Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
How efficient of, of the water in this neighborhood was? Did you get to a mile? Hey, anyone else? Sorry. Again, Mr. Marasco, did you, did you know what the condition of the water in this area, in this neighborhood was prior to it being clear cut?
Yes, so-
Is it worse now or the same? Because I, I understand with the way those seasons have been the last few years, it's one year we have our heavy rain, next year it's a summer drought, next year it's a heavy rain, next year it's a summer drought. It's so it's kind of-
Yeah, I can answer your question, and I also have a couple of observations as the house was being built. There's about a hundred or so feet of wetlands on the rear of the property. And that's the property that abuts the neighbors. I think that's, is that east or west? And that's the rear of my property. And I also have a pool back there and a structure. So I'm familiar with that property. It is a very dry year this year, but typically there is water always back there. And when the lot was clear cut, Anthony, to answer your question, yes, it significantly had runoff. I actually, I know Chris. So I went over to her house one time when she was struggling with the water. And, and I, I forget if it was to the right or to the left, but there was a huge, like, gully now that has been created from the water flowing just, just to relieve itself. It goes, passes through her property.
This is something new.
This is, this was something new.
After the clear cut.
After the clear cut. Well, yeah, because it clear cut like four acres. You clear cut four acres.
No, I just wanted-
Water's got to go somewhere.
Believe me.
Yeah.
Think some people understand. I think I understand it more than others.
Yeah. Well, and so another, another event that happened is the proponent had put in drainage from the street to capture some of this water, and he redirected it to my property. I don't know if that's in the files or not, but I think it was Rich Berube was the, on the Board of Health at that time, and he came down and we had a conversation with him. And he relieved the water by putting in, you know, pipes. He called it a French drain. Well, they're pipes, and they came through my property, broke through a, a rock wall, put the pipes through, and then put the rocks back on it. So the Board of Health had him remove those. So we obviously know there's a water problem. He was trying to just redirect it. And so when he was building this property, you, you, you all familiar with a walkout basement? It's, it's basically, it's, it's a full level, and it's level with the ground. So you've got, so I'm looking at really four stories of building. Instead of just the thirty-five feet or whatever, you know, your height requirement is to the peak, I'm looking at, I'm looking at a full four stories. So it's, it's more than, than the requirement. And the way it was built, because I'm sure the water was recognized, was the footing from what I saw was only maybe four feet deep. And then he built on top of that. So he doesn't really have a full basement. He has a walkout basement. So half that basement is above ground. All of the dirt you see in the front of the building was all brought in. So there's obviously a water problem there. When you dig, when you dig probably more than his three or four feet, whatever he did for the foundation, he might have hit water. So to answer your question, yes. Sorry, I went around a bit.
Yeah, it's fine. Appreciate that.
Then, oh, Mr. Marasco?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you.
See if there's anybody else in the audience? Do have to give everybody a chance. So if there's anybody else here that would like to speak? Is there anybody on Zoom at this point, Catherine?
Chair, there are no hands raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't ever like to interrupt anyone, but I want to reiterate that the agreed-upon remand order from the judge, I'm going to just read something from the court order. "The scope of the remand hearing shall be limited to consideration of the amendments to the subdivision plan and its compliance with Section 1C of the Planning Board's Subdivision Rules and Regulations." Why was that put in there? To avoid exactly the sort of digression into often and long discredited misstatements about drainage involving the subdivision. Now, I don't want to compound the fact that something that shouldn't have been discussed is yet again the only thing that's actually being discussed. But I do think it's important-
Audience, right? So let's-
I, I understand, and members of the board.
Well, a new member, right? He's just, he's getting familiar with the whole situation.
Fair enough. And I just want to make sure to reiterate something.
Giving everybody the rope, right? Because I don't want her to turn around and say, they didn't give me my time, and then they're going to sue you again, right?
I mean to say-
We gave them their rope, right? We, 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 it's a public hearing. Everybody gets their chance to speak.
I'm not criticizing you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that since it's been brought up, that the record is complete. Years ago, when the variance was granted thereby demonstrating there's no issue with infectious invalidity or any other zoning issues, during the public hearing, the ZBA received very clear determination from the Board of Health, which stated, quote, "Actions proposed by the applicant will result in storm runner, water runoff to abutting properties being reduced by sixty percent." Now, a lot of that hasn't happened. Why? Because we don't have a subdivision approval. What's the best way to have those stormwater controls implemented? Approve the subdivision, which, as the Board of Health noted, will result in a sixty percent reduction in runoff to abutting properties. In terms of vegetative screening, also not something properly before the board because it doesn't have to do with the sole issue that this court said the board should look at. But again, it was raised. It's been discussed. I want to, so, and is not an appropriate subject of a, of a condition. But I do think it's important to note. And I, while I'm at the mic, I'm going to say something, and then I just would like to show the board a 2025 Google Earth image that shows an extremely thick vegetative buffer of trees between three eleven and the subject property where the clearing has been. So I think, again, just to set the record straight, there already are a huge number of trees. Three eleven, the subject problem. Three eleven, the subject problem.
But in that photo and in that picture, there is no building yet, and they could have potentially removed more trees in order to make things work. I'm, I'm just speaking out as an observer, right? You're bringing that to my attention. I'm bringing you my, my critique to that because I'm looking at the GAS right here, and it looks like there's about five sticks in between.
Well, all I can tell you is that there are trees there, and there's no subdivision rule or regulation that governs screening on an individual lot. Again, that's not the subject of subdivision control.
But we do require two trees per lot for roadway, and we have-
But there's no roadway.
Along the roadway. There is the roadway, Concord Road. You abut the roadway. So in, in lieu of you putting two trees at the end of the three oh five Concord Road driveway, I would ask you to plant those two trees in between the structure and Mr. Marasco's property.
Here's what I would say, Mr. Chair.
Still have to do two trees. I'm not waving that.
Well.
Okay? Neither will this board. So you owe us four trees when, when this gets voted, two on the new lot and two on three oh five. Where you put them, we will allow you to put them as vegetative buffer. That would be a, an agreement this board could make. But under our subdivision rules and regulations, you most certainly do require two trees per lot under that. And so, to be honest, I'm going to be very clear and honest. You owe four. We're asking maybe for like six more. Put ten trees on this huge lot. I mean, really, what are we talking, like, five thousand, six thousand bucks for this guy? He's probably going to dig it with his excavator that's there. It's not a huge impact that we'd be asking for. So I think it's, although you don't see it as part of the scope, working with the neighborhood, you know, I think at this time probably shows a little more faith than just drawing a strong line saying, we don't owe you anything. So that's the way I look at it. So I, I'm, I'm, I am asking you, and I'll, then I'll take a vote of our board for the four trees that are required and six additional for a total of ten, placed as vegetative screening. And so although it's, you say it's not in our scope, we can always ask for it. It's always available for us to ask for things, always.
I won't dispute that, Mr. Chair. What I will say is-
So would you guys agree to six additional trees on top of the four?
I'm not in a-
Okay, then we have to wait.
Could I, could I just speak for a moment, Mr. Chair? So I came here in good faith based on a remand order that the board agreed to that said nothing was going to be discussed except compliance with 1C. I show up tonight, and I'm being told that there's going to be a condition that has nothing to do with that.
I'm asking, not told. We're asking.
I don't know. I, I, I'm hearing-
Well, you're being told you owe four. Two on one lot, two on another. That is in our subdivision rules and regulations. There's no getting around that. I'm not telling you above and beyond that. I am asking. And I will ask our board members if they agree on my ask.
So what I can say is I have no doubt that my client would be willing to entertain a request on that. But certainly not if we don't get a vote tonight. And that a condition that's outside the scope of the land court order that both parties agreed upon does not feel either fair or consistent with the law. If there's something relating to 1C that we're going to be conditioned on, that's one thing. But I don't think there is. And to show up without any prior warning or reference or even the courtesy of, hey, would you think about this?
We just, we just got-
And being told that-
Two also, just so you know.
Well, that's fair enough, Mr. Chair, but this is not a new project. And when you talk about, well, it's not that much money, this has been held up, and my client has had to spend money on litigation despite repeated court decisions in his favor. And all the while, he's paying carrying costs. He's paying litigation costs. He's paying, you know, he, he's in, now in a position where construction costs have increased probably sixty percent from when this all started. So I would ask the board to keep that in mind when you're talking about imposing conditions. If your statement is, you're asking the applicant in good faith, look, he's going to want to sell these lots, and they're gonna, he's going to want them to be attractive, and that includes landscaping and planting trees. I don't think there's going to be an issue there. But I would just caution and ask the board not to go about imposing conditions that are clearly outside the scope of what everyone agreed to as an order of remand. That's all I'm saying. I have no doubt that my client would consider in good faith requests to plant more trees and to discuss with the neighbor where those trees are going to be planted.
Lorax Committee Member, let's get that crap going so that we can tell these people that they have to plant trees. Like, seriously, you're a human. We all breathe oxygen. I'll plant trees on my property to take care of it, I guess, my own money. Yes, you have not been able to come to the podium. Of course you may.
I'm Dean Valerian, three oh nine Concord Road. I believe I'm south of the property. I mean, everything that, you know, our neighbors have said is very true. So with him wanting to do this other lot, I'll, I'll be in the same position that Mr. Marasco is in. The land comes down towards my lot, so I'm on the lower end. And I'm too probably going to be looking at a four-story building as well, which I'm not going to be happy with that either. And if that was going to be approved, I'm going to want some heavy vegetation back there. And to answer your question, how he showed you an area view of saying this heavy vegetation, I mean, one, you're looking down from earth. A tree's big. You're not looking through. I mean, one, you're looking down from earth, a tree's big, you're not looking through. And, um, before he did start building, he did do a lot more cutting. And he cut more trees along my property as well. So we lost a lot. And this was just before he started building. No, I don't approve of this other lot, it's not conforming. I, I don't see how you can borrow frontage from another house to get another lot. If that's the case, then I'm gonna be here trying to do that to my lot. I don't think it's right. And, uh, the house he did build, he, he built that way out of the ground, six or eight feet. So, everybody's getting more water. Uh, he's shedding the water away from, and just bringing it to everybody else. You know? And he's gonna do the same thing with this other one.
People do have land rights, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Right? There was a house right next to you-
Yep.
Before it was torn down.
Yep.
I walked this property many years ago. Um, I drive by it a lot. I have not seen personally extra creep to a job property because it was already cut close to your rock wall. So, uh, I haven't seen actually any movement on that front property, to be honest, really. A big dirt pile and a, and a roadway that's still there, but I, I'm not gonna, you live there, a- and again, they're gonna have to do two trees on that lot. So you can work with the, the property owner to get those two trees placed. As he said, he would work in faith with the property owners to place these trees in the proper location, uh, to best suit everybody.
Mm-hmm.
But that's, as far as, we can only require two on each lot, we're gonna ask for some more. And we're hoping that this, uh, developer agrees to, or, uh, shall I say, um, stands by the word of his attorney here that he will work in faith with the neighbors and, and provide some additional screening, uh, so that he can make his homes also, you know, have that value. So, um, I'm, I'm definitely going to, you know, call out the, the two trees per lot in our conditions because that's required. Uh, and then we're going to have to have a gentleman's agreement for the rest of it.
I think the bottom line we should be looking at is, nobody agrees to this and it doesn't conform. So it should not be granted. I think that's the bottom line.
Unfortunately, this went to the zoning board of appeals. They granted a variance. Once they grant the variance, and it was fought in land court and that was also overturned, uh, sorry, it was upheld. And so the variance stands, that makes their zoning conforming. That's how it works. And there are many lots-
You guys-
That were not conforming, that have been split. Um, and, and so, well, are we gonna turn the books on twenty-five years of lot splits that are infectious for invadility? I, I don't believe that, uh, that applies when the zoning board of appeals makes a determination on a lot split, um, request.
Well, probably, uh, situation with other people, there's probably no conflict. People were fine with it.
And when it comes to our board, we, we have limited rights over these lot splits, unfortunately. Um, and, and it's our subdivision rules and regulations. Now thankfully, the board is behind the scenes working on subdivision rules and regulations. And once we bring these new ones that will have a little more teeth and they're voted on by our board, people will have to follow these. But right now, what we have is, is, they are now meeting our subdivision rules and regulations. And easement is listed in the listing for the fifty feet, so.
All right, it's up to you guys to make the right decision. Thank you.
One question, Ms. Musco. Up to the mic, please.
If we have never had water in forty-two years-
Ms. Musco, hold on.
This is the question.
Uh, uh, but he's here also under a limited scope. We, we love you to talk, but he's, he's going to say, I have no comment because his-
Okay, wait, this is so simple.
I'll give you, say the question, but I'm advising you that he's-
Also brought up, I didn't say it, because I rushed, that the developer is going to reduce sixty percent of the water from our properties. If we've never had water in forty-two years, who's gonna get rid of the other forty percent? And who's gonna pay for all the damage? I know you put a bond, I think it was a hundred and forty-six thousand. Is that gonna cover all the homes that are being flooded out? So, again, if you're gonna get rid of sixty percent of water that we've never had, what about the other forty that you're continuing to get? I think that's a-
I'll allow you to answer that if you want, and otherwise you can say, no comment. I, I understand where your position lies.
Thank you. Just to clarify, what that refers to is sixty percent of the pre-development runoff. Water goes downhill. So, it's not eliminating sixty percent of increased water, it's eliminating sixty percent of pre-development uh, drainage onto that lot. And just a point of clarification, Mr. Chair, just to put your mind at ease, uh, my client informs me that the stormwater plan that was approved both by Board of Health and by the Conservation Commission, and part of that stormwater reduction is an extensive planting plan that he tells me includes about twenty trees. Right, so, I wanted to just, uh, give you that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, do we have this?
Upon request, yes, of course.
No, I mean from the Conservation and Board of Health that he just mentioned. Their conditions.
Posted Catherine.
We can see if we can pull it up.
Because I'm, to me, that's one of the biggest concerns is controlling that water.
So I would advise you to take a quick walk over there, Tony. Because as the lawyer stated, water flows downhill. And it's coming, the water isn't originating from three oh five, it's running through three oh five. It's coming from above, Ranlet Lane is higher than three oh five. All of that slopes-
Slops downward.
So it's, it's-
Going towards route four, towards the road.
It's, 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 it's not like they struck a well and it's making water flow on, they did it, right? The wa, the water has been flowing through that whole entire wooded area for many, many years.
I will just make-
And I'm just gonna leave that at that.
No, I just wanted, just, so there's something that happened many years ago when they were doing Governor Doherty Woods. And they hit some, uh, spring in the construction, in the original, um, what do you call it, containment that they were planning for that, um, got overwhelmed and they had to make the, a little bit bigger to deal with the drains. So I fully understand that, because it's up by where I grew up. So, you know, I, it, it's just that, I, I think the big thing is, I mean, it looks like we're gonna be kind of limited to the, to the one little scope thing tonight, right? And unfortunately, right? And so, but, I'm sure that based on the plans and based on hopefully what we get from the Board of Health and Conservation, that their plans for storm, for runoff will be mitigated to the point where at least it's not affecting the neighbors anymore eh, than it was prior to this being developed.
So Chair, I pulled up the stormwater permit that they got, um, in two thousand, originally in two thousand nineteen, but then it was put on hold. Um, there are thirty-one conditions on it. This, so this is what they have, this is what they're requiring. I don't know if you want me to go through all thirty-one conditions, um, but I do have it on the screen.
You email it to us?
Yeah.
And can it be isolate, can you isolate to where it talks about plantings and landscaping?
Let me see.
That's kind of where the question lies right now. Just to confirm.
Possibly.
And then Catherine, while Jane is looking that up, standard condition would be for them to meet all Board of Health and Conservation requirements as part of our approvals.
Yes.
Not really changing much. Okay. All right. Other thoughts from board members?
If, if the parameters are forty feet for the, the, um, driveway necessary to split the lot, why can't the builder meet the forty feet?
It's, it's fifty feet.
Or fifty feet, why can't the builder meet the actual footage?
So, they're at forty feet. We denied it based on it not meeting the fifty feet. They went to the court, the court has sided essentially with the developer, asking them to come back to us on a remand. But with, you know, trying to meet, uh, our subdivision rules and regulations. And if I read it for, word for word-
My, my question is, why can't-
So, hold on, so, they've come back and now added ten feet with an easement. Meaning, if they need to make that driveway fifty feet for some reason, they can do it because they'll have the easement in that area. And so our subdivision rules and regu, regulations say private driveways, easements or right-of-ways, and all other substandard ways access must be enlarged to a layout of fifty feet. So, they're giving forty feet plus the ten-feet easement, which is listed in that statement, gives us the total fifty feet. So now they meet that quote-unquote section of our subdivision rules and regulations.
But the road would not be fifty feet wide?
No, the driveway, I, I mean, maybe twenty feet, I, I'm not sure what, you know, they would pay for a driveway going down through there to get to the, to the actual parking location in front of the house, right? This is, the, uh, again, I didn't write this, this is just what we have to adjudicate when people come in. And-
So the, it will be, it would be twenty feet wide, but it's supposed to be fifty?
I don't know how wide they're gonna pave it. I, I just imagine that they would pave it wide enough for one car to drive down in there, you know, or maybe one and a half. So if people happen to be coming in and out, because it is a duplex home, you know, maybe the two cars could pass. I mean, a car is what, ten feet at most, so twen, you know, twenty feet with two cars? I'm guessing, we don't have a plan of a driveway, that's not under our scope.
I guess, I'm, I'm wondering if, like, why is it an easement versus this is fifty feet? And that, like, I don't, I don't know that you know the answer, but I don't know if it's because there's a section that isn't, in, is it protected land from swamp area that they can't actually make it fifty feet wide, or?
The original front of the property where the house was, if you can imagine Conquered Road, and, you know, they're coming down on this side of the, the property with that forty feet now, fifty feet easement. And then, as the guy said, flag, so it's a flag like this, and the lots in back. So there'll be a long driveway to access that home that's been built.
I, I can potentially weigh in a, their likely motivation. The two frontages have already been established by the variances they receive through the zoning board. So doing a different lot line adjustment as opposed to an easement would go back and restart that process. An easement is a lawful instrument per our subdivision rules.
Was thinking I might have to go back to Z B A again, also. Lots, Mr. Robertson? No, Mr. Chair. So Samaya? Fresca? Mr. Traboo?
I'll look through the old files as quickly as possible, but I'm not sure that I'm gonna be able to pull up the vegetation, the stuff with vegetation.
It looks like on their approval, sorry, the Board of Health approval, it cites four different plans that are the basis for theirs. So there's a topographic plan of land, a site plan of land, detailed plan of land, and proposed drainage review plan of land. So those documents would be on file with the Board of Health, but we aren't necessarily looking at those here. What is written is the finding that the proposed stormwater management system includes the installation of drip line infiltration trenches to capture roof runoff from the rear dwelling, subsurface infiltration systems for both dwellings, and a rain garden to treat runoff from the proposed driveway for the rear dwelling. So it does not specifically list the tree count within that, but whatever landscaping those plans might show, what I believe the client's referring to.
If by chance the drainage doesn't work, and, and what kind of recourse would happen? If it's, if something can be added at this point?
Catherine?
Um, the same for any residential property with a drainage issue with their neighbor. You would take that up with any enforcement through Board of Health or building.
And there'd obviously be final inspections after it's been completed for it to have been built per, you know, the approvals. So as long as we start there, that it's been built by the approvals, then. Okay. Take a motion to close the public hearing.
Hi, Grace Tucci, precinct nine. I'm not an abutter or anything, but I have a question. Knowing that we, what we know from these neighbors who properties abut this property and is causing flooding, is that now gonna put a burden on them to require flood insurance? Because I know what it's like, I live in a flooding area, and I know how expensive flooding insurance is. So, that's another thing to think about. Because now, these people who are getting flooded, and if the bankers aware of that, and they just did a reassessment, I think of them, of the map, where people who never had, including my son, he never had water in his basement. And now the town passed, I think it was last spring, the new green map, or whatever it is. And now he has to get flood insurance. So I'm just wondering if these people are now gonna be burdened with another thing on top of that, something to think about? Thank you.
Not really in our scope, Ms. Tucci, unfortunately. Uh, knowing who needs flood insurance or not is not something that is considered, or, you know, uh, the-
I, I do have one thing to say, Mike.
Good.
The only thing I really wanted to stress here is what we feel personally as planning board members and what we're looking at when we're assessing properties. Like the whole objective that we try to do, whether it's a B two or any other project, is to minimize any, any, you know, minimize any type of negative externalities for any project and try to make the best project that we can, and that's what we try to do. Um, we don't, I've had on this board where I haven't personally liked certain applicants, but that's pretty irrelevant, whether I like or dislike them is irrelevant to the, the decisions that we should make here for, you know, we, we try to create the best project and then move forward with it there. And so it's, uh, you know, I tried to my best to remove that, um, the personal stuff. But even, even in this, it is actually incredibly hard to, uh, to, to do that. But that's just what we have to do, because then we have, you know, we've had decisions in the past where people have put their personalities into this and have denied applicants within the past. They go to a land court and then that is overturned and then remanded back to us to then approve. And that is not because we don't care about what the residents say. It's because that's just, you know, there's certain, we can't let our, our personal- it's because that's just, you know, there's certain, we can't let our, our personal, you know, vendettas get in the way of making sure, you know, that we're at least following or having a good, strong argument, we can deny projects, and they can go to court and we can win on that, but the thing is, is that we have to have very usually solid reasonings for those denials or, you know, or the project test, you know, they were blatantly just not following the law, and then that's why we denied it. But, you know, most cases that we go through these hearings, these public hearings to hear residents and stuff, we do the best we can in order to minimize, like I said, anything, anything bad and try to make things better for people. So I, I just want people to know that it, it, I, you know, I've just how I feel about this is not is, is separate from how I would, you know, I could essentially vote on it there, so that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. First of all, I want to apologize for the outbursts from earlier, but do not bring family into these things. What I will say also is that I received Mr. Marasco's request earlier today. I don't think that was an unreasonable request. And it's on record that the attorney that has now said that the developer is willing to put, I think he said twenty trees on the lot.
From conservation and Board of Health requirements, yeah.
Fine, and that's on record now, it's on record on Board of Health as well as Conservation now Planning Board. This is a remand hearing which does direct us to consider one point. We've gone a little off stray, but no one is surprised by that. So I would ask that the developer, as well as the abutters, work together to avoid things like that happened earlier today, and again, I apologize for that earlier, my outburst at least, but don't bring family into it. And I will just ask that the developer, as well as the abutters, work together to make the best project possible, as Chris just said. We try and work with everyone to make the best result that we can. So if you're willing to put the trees up, it's in the, it's in the orders. You do have to comply with the Board of Health and the conservation requirements regardless of whether we put that in the motion or not, but we will do that, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
With that being said, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, Tony, we just. Oh, second.
Mr. Robertson, close the public hearing?
Yes.
Mr. Sumea?
Yes.
Mr. Vintresca?
Yes.
Mr. Traboo?
Yes.
Mr. Giroux?
Aye.
And I am a yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the B two subdivision at three oh five Concord Road with conditions already issued by the Board of Health and Conservation Commission.
Motion?
Second.
Thank you, Evans. Okay. Motion made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson? There's a no, and we have five other yeses. Pass this five to one.
Thank you. Is there anything else? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment, Article thirty eight to the fall town meeting.
Second.
Evans, Sumea on a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is the Swanson Meadows rezon article.
The applicant for Swanson Meadows?
Can you hear me?
Given the, the, the note that we received talking about the fact that there's a restricted covenant on this property, I'm not certain that we should be, we're ready and should be having this discussion.
And on top of that, Mr. Chairman, so in the legal opinions, we have to get a revenge from the board as well. So I think this order, it's out of order at this point in time?
So you are talking about first right of refusal?
Yeah, right, there's restricted, not, not reference refusal, there's restrictive covenant on use. No, it's, it's beyond that.
What is it that you're talking?
Restriction is forever applied to use and enjoyment of the property. So is the memo that was forwarded from Dina Favreau?
Captain, can you weigh in on those two points, please?
Absolutely, I'm not a land use attorney, however, one is on Zoom with his hand raised.
If I may, Mr. Chair, on behalf of the petitioner?
Sure.
So for the record, my name is Brian McGrail, I'm an attorney representing one of the property owners, Swanson Meadows Golf Course, Inc., and also one of the petitioners, Mr. Dalton, who was at the podium. I believe that you, an issue has been raised as far as a restrictive covenant that applies to the golf course. I would say that there is a restrictive covenant on the golf course as to use, but that has nothing to do with zoning bylaws and zoning maps, as it may affect that golf course now or in the future. So with all due respect, it is absolutely irrelevant as it pertains to a petition to change the zoning on the property.
I appreciate being blind side of my memo that I don't have.
It's not relevant.
And, Mr. Chair, I mean, it was, you know, most of our communications are blind copy so that we cannot violate over meeting laws, so it is hard to validate when documents are sent to an individual solely or to the entire board.
Show you my email.
No, that's okay.
Chair, if I may. So as far as that email that went out stating that all planning board members would be BCC, there was also a request that it be read in as public comment tonight. So perhaps the best thing is if you want to read it in, I'm sure it's longer than the three to five minutes, but if you wanted to acknowledge it that way to aid in the board's discussion.
Sure.
The public hearing by the planning board is required pursuant to MGL Chapter forty eight subsection plot, the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw. The select board should vote to refer this article.
The point is that the, the select board should vote to refer this article to the planning board for a hearing and for that board to prepare a report of its recommendations to town meeting. That has not happened yet, as far as I know. Did it happen tonight? Because I just?
That's what this is, yes.
No, 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 select board. It says the select board should vote to refer this article to the planning board. As far as I know, that has not happened.
Is that, that's what Dina said?
No, that's the legal opinion Town Council.
Chair?
Please.
If I may, when articles are first submitted, they can, or in that legal term should be referred by the select board, it is not mandatory, so you've heard many public hearings for zoning amendments that were not first referred by the select board.
Is that in response to Dina's?
No, 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 this is the legal opinions that Town Council did on the preliminary warrant. I know there's three FinCom members on there who, you know, me, Ed and Blake are very familiar with these, because we used to get them at FinCom. This is the, this is the legal opinions from Town Council on the warrant articles.
Chair, if I may reiterate, the legal opinion is to clarify the process and that a public hearing through the planning board is required, which is what tonight is, not just for Article thirty eight, but also for Article thirty nine. If this select board did not meet and refer it themselves, then the public hearing is still required and we're here tonight. And ultimately, when we go through it all, Form seven goes to the Attorney General's office and asks for verification of all of the different dates that everything was done, it even includes that optional select board date. So if anything is found wrong, Attorney General would not approve it. I can pull up MGL or that Attorney General form if that helps?
Well, I, I am interested in what Tony has there. And I didn't see that, I'm sorry. I, I get that.
Look at it, or.
But it wasn't distributed to all of us, right? So.
Sorry, I go digging. So don't I?
But if we got a Town Council opinion, why wouldn't that have been handed to us?
I, I'd.
Great question, Mr. Chair.
It, it's, yeah, I mean, but.
And who asked for the Town Council opinion?
These, this all the time. Yeah.
Issues opinions on each article.
And that goes to the town manager?
Town manager, select board, and finance committee.
Chair, from there, the town manager's office does forward it to anyone who has submitted articles, so that's how we had the legal opinion from the planning board submissions last week, and petitioners tonight would also have received that legal opinion.
Can I read that, Tony, please?
In the first paragraph of the Town Council's review, their last sentence, the article is okay as to legal form, but please know the fault, and that's where they talk about select which are supposed to refer the articles.
Is, is that opinion on the same for every zoning article? Is the verbiage there for every single one? So essentially that they have done that, they've accepted the warrant, and we need to have a public hearing on zoning articles. I think they're just paid by the word, their lawyers.
Which they did have a public hearing to accept the warrant and articles. Which then by right is on the article, ask of caring.
Yep.
So is it a?
If they have the same verbiage on every zoning article, I think effectively that's what they meant.
And I'm talking without my mic on, sorry, Jamie. And the people on BATV, and then the audience. And so I will agree with the lawyer that no matter what the land is bound by, us putting an overlay of a potential elderly housing doesn't negate what's there, doesn't change timelines, doesn't change anything, it just gives them the opportunity to spend their money to make pretty plans and maybe bring us a plan, right? It doesn't change our first right of refusal, it doesn't change any of the parameters of the existing covenants that are already in place. All we're doing is putting an overlay onto the property for them to say, okay, now we can at least design something around this overlay. So I, again, if they were asking for us to get rid of a lot of other things, Mr. Robertson and Mr. Vintresca, I, I too would be standing here in opposition, but they are just looking for a potential zoning overlay to be added to the properties. So before we begin with the applicants, I will read in.
Chair? Before you begin reading in, you have a motion and a second to open the public hearing, I don't believe there was a vote yet. It is not yet open.
Really?
Maybe I missed it, but there was a lot of kind of points of order and discussion.
If, no, I said all in favor and, and, and we got ayes, because I remember Blake going aye. Because he was a little deflated at that point, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you. So opening the hearing was?
Hearing is open, because I did ask the applicant to come up. So before he does, let me just read this into, it won't take, it won't take that long. And this is from Dina Favreau. Says, dear members of the planning board, I write to express my strong opposition to the proposed town meeting warrant article seeking to establish the elderly housing overlay district at Swanson Meadow, and I respectfully urge the planning board to withhold any recommendation of support for this article. My concerns are grounded in both legal and environmental issues outlined as followed. Procedural deficiencies. According to advisory opinion from Town Council, the proposed article requires both a public hearing and an affirmative vote from the select board before it may be referred to the planning board. As the public hearing is scheduled for the same night as a select board meeting on September fifteenth, the procedural requirement cannot be met. Advancing the article under these circumstances would be premature and in violation of the necessary legal process. Two, Swanson Meadow land, legal and environmental restrictions. The land has a long and complex legal history, including being placed in Chapter sixty one A in nineteen eighty-three, and later subject to an agreement with the Sudbury Valley Trust in granting the town a right of first refusal in two thousand after the tragic passing of Weston Swanson, the town filed tax taking, and shortly thereafter, Mr. Skipper acquired the property and entered into a restrictive covenant explicitly limiting the land to no more than eighty residential units in a nine-hole golf course, regardless of any future zoning allowances. That same day, October fifth, two thousand, he executed a conservation restriction in perpetuity, prohibiting construction, dumping, deforesting. perpetuity prohibiting construction, dumping, deforestation, or any detrimental use of the land beyond passive recreation. Three, additionally, the power of attorney was granted to the town of Bill Ricker through the select board in perpetuity, binding future successors. These legal instruments remain in effect and must be honored. Four, Bedford Woods Development Land Industrial Containment Concerns. This parcel was originally a part of a hundred and twenty-seven acre parcel formerly owned by DuPont Pharmaceuticals and New England Nuclear Corp. and has been documented, has a documented industrial legacy purchased by Bedford Woods in two thousand thirteen. In two thousand one, DuPont recorded an industrial restrictive covenant on the land specifically citing current concerns such as waste dumping and designating the restrictions to forever apply to the use and enjoyment of the property. This covenant appears to have been overlooked during subsequent development applications for Falcon Estates and Sumner Farms, raising concerns about potential environmental health risks, especially for vulnerable fifty-five-plus residents who may be unaware of the site's hazardous. In light of these factors, particularly legal obligations owed by the town with respect to Swanson Meadows and with potential health risks associated with Bedford Woods, I strongly urge the planning board to deny recommending this, recommend in support of this overlay. Attached for your review of the documents that support why the town must not proceed with Article thirty-eight and show that the plans are legally flawed, environmentally risky, and contain longstanding covenants intended to protect both the public interest and the land itself. She did state, all members have been blind copied here and I ask that my letter be read in, into the record on Monday, September fifteenth, and that the documents provided be entered into public record. So that was Ms. Favreau's written statement as she would not be able to be here to give us her opinions in, in person. So with that, we'll move forward to the applicants to tell us what they're proposing and asking of the planning board here tonight. So introduce yourself, your name and information.
Yes, so like my name is Ralph Delden and I live at two hundred and sixteen Rangeway Road and that's unit one-one-three. As we've been proceeding today, we're like taking an awful lot of time, I guess, to get to the real meat of like what we're presenting. And I am excited and, and, and happy to present this. I think I would like to ask your permission to turn over the presentation to Attorney Brian like McGrail and that if I could talk at the end for a few minutes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I speak?
Of course, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Brian McGrail. I'm an attorney representing, as I'd mentioned earlier, Swanson Meadows Golf Course, Inc., which is the owner of one of the subject properties. And I'm also speaking on behalf of Mr. Delvin, one of the petitioners on this article. To start, I agree with absolutely everything that you said at the outset of this, Mr. Chair. You were spot on. I dispute some of the statements that were made by Ms. Favreau's, but with all due respect, they're really not relevant for purposes tonight. They can cut, they would be dealt with at a later date. If passed by the town, this article will overlay and apply the elderly housing overlay district on land identified as, Bill Ricker Assessors Map Thirty-eight Parcel Six-One having an address of two-twenty-two Rangeway Road. Land identified as Map Thirty-eight Parcel Five-Dash-Ten on the assessors map and having an address of two-sixteen-and-a-half Rangeway Road. And finally, land identified as Map Fifty-eight Parcel Two-Dash-Four having a present address of Parcel B off Republic Road. For purposes of my presentation, may I share my screen, Mr. Chair?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. So what I am showing on my screen is the map that is part of the zoning article. And those three parcels of land that I mentioned are this Lot One down here, which is two-twenty-two Rangeway Road with frontage on Range Way. Lot Three, which is Swanson, Swanson Meadows Golf Course, which goes up and all the way around, which is approximately fifty-two acres of land. And that, in both Lot One and Lot Three are in the rural residential district. And lastly, this piece out back, Parcel B, which I referenced, is approximately fifty acres of land. And so these, these combined properties, if you will, total approximately one hundred acres of land or more. If this article is passed, it will put the overlay district for elderly housing on these properties, which would allow fifty-five and over housing on the properties. Is, was kind of discussed by you at the outset, Mr. Chair. This article is all about providing choices and options for the town of Bill Ricker as it relates to possible future uses of Swanson Meadows Golf Course and those adjacent properties. It's no secret that the goal of my client that owns Swanson Meadows is to develop the golf course for another use. One obvious possible use of the golf course could be single-family houses. As I mentioned, it's zoned rural residential. And Swanson Meadows has actually retained a very respected engineering firm out of Woburn, Allen and Major Engineering, and they've determined that with the fifty thousand square foot lot requirement in rural residential districts, approximately forty-five single-family houses could be constructed on the Swanson Meadows property alone. And one could assume that many of those houses would include accessory dwelling units, which I'm sure the board is well aware has now become a by right use in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under state law. So the population, including school-aged children, would increase. This article, if passed, will provide another option for the properties, that being fifty-five and over housing in the form of the elderly housing overlay district. Especially when compared to single-family homes, fifty-five and over housing provides significant benefits to the community that it's situated in. When older adults downsize into age-restricting housing, it opens up larger homes for young families, helping ease housing shortages and improve turnover in residential neighborhoods. It gives the senior population a place to, a place to live. They provide reduced strain on local services, with the exception of police and fire services. Fifty-five and older communities have very little reliance on public services and infrastructure such as schools, trash, or snow plowing. They also provide a tremendous economic boost to stimulate the local economy. Seniors tend to support local businesses, especially those offering healthcare, dining, and leisure activities. It's a fact that fifty-five and over communities tend to have lower crime rates and foster quiet and more stable environment, which can positively influence the surrounding area. They also promote retirees participating and engaging in community services, mentoring, and local governance. A development of a property, significant piece of land like this with fifty-five and over, is a much more efficient use for the land than single-family housing. Typically built as clustered homes, reducing overall land consumption when compared to single-family homes that are built on these large fifty thousand square foot independent lots with one home per parcel and obviously the accessory uses that go with each house, swimming pools and the like. Is, they provide fifty-five and over provides an option for significant open space when compared to conventional single-family housing. That open space could be used by the residents and potentially by the public at large. Swanson Meadows has also had Allen and Major Engineering prepare a very preliminary and rudimentary plan showing one possible way fifty-five and over housing could be laid out on the subject properties. I'd like to show that, if I may. And again, this is just preliminary to give, give a rough idea on how it potentially could be, be laid out. To orient you on this plan, Rangeway Road is here. This is the clubhouse for the golf course. This is two-twenty-two. And then you see how these small style, really single-story type townhomes could be fit in and really they fit into the landscape. It's not like putting in a fifty-foot wide right of way that goes all the way through with the houses and again, the fifty thousand square foot lot. So it really gives an opportunity to engineer the property, to save a lot of open space and respect the natural features of the land. This plan shows one hundred and sixty-two units. We believe that would be the maximum that would fit. And so we had them put that in here. My client has also, I'm going to try to switch screens on the fly here. Are you able to see this new screen? I'll stop sharing just to. My client has also retained U, U architects to provide just some, again, preliminary rudimentary drawings of possible units and layouts of how a fifty-five and over development could work in this area. As you can see, they're, they're single story because it's fifty-five and over living, very low profile. Just to give you, again, this is very rudimentally, but, but it's always good to kind of give an idea of the thoughts that are taking place. Pictures, pictures are valuable. Just a basic floor, floor plan, again, single floor living, two-car garage, basement storage, deck, yard space, which would be open space, not individual yards, obviously accessible living on one level. And then obviously the amenities that go with it. This would be a clubhouse design for either a new clubhouse or renovation of the existing clubhouse for the residents. Again, just a conceptual. And then the amenities, obviously there's amenities for the seniors that would live here, lobbies, as, you know, these facilities have group fit, fitness, art studios, workshops, you know, a pool, a gymnasium, a business center, a kitchen bar, club room. So it's really, you know, a nice feature for the folks that live there. This is, this is the general vision that, that my client would have. And then I mentioned, there's a lot of open space opportunities. This is just one of the open space areas with lawn area, a playground for the young children that would come to visit, grandchildren, pavilions, benches. Again, huge amount of open space, walkways, walking paths, outdoor pavilions, outdoor Community gardens, dog parks, bicycle lanes, and I mentioned picnic areas. One thing that's important to look at a project like this is the financial impact that it can have on a community like Bill Ricker. So we thought it would be prudent to retain a gentleman by the name of Mark Forgier. Mark is a very well-respected member of the American Institute for Certified Planners. And we had, we wanted Mark to take a look at the economic aspects of the development of this land for fifty-five and over development. The combined tax revenue on all of these properties is approximately seventy-one thousand dollars a year for the, for the town of Bill Ricker.
Is that currently?
That's currently correct because the golf course is taxed as recreational. So the combined of all three is approximately seventy-one thousand. This is Mark's report. And what he, what he did is he based it on a hundred and fifty units. We, we say one sixty-two, we all know upfront, we never end up where we say. So just conservatively, from a revenue perspective, we just threw a number of one fifty. As you know from your bylaw, fifteen percent of these units would have to be affordable units. So Mark has valued these units from his review of eight-seventy-five. We think that's probably conservative, but that's good for, from a numbers perspective of what we're presenting to you. And the affordable units would be priced in approximately three hundred and ten thousand. So based on the current tax rate, rate, a community of this nature would estimate a generated tax of one point three four four million in annual property tax revenue. An estimated fifty-six thousand in vehicle excise tax revenue would be generated. The total annual community revenue for the town of Bill Ricker is estimated to be approximately one point four million, one point five, one point four one. And I talked a little bit about it. Obviously, there's no school impacts here, no snow plowing, no trash, it's all privately handled. So really no resources of the town, except for police and fire, obviously. Mark looked at this from a project of this nature in, in his database that he has, and he determined that it would generate an estimated sixty-seven police calls annually to a facility of this nature. And his statement is the department responded to some thirty-seven thousand calls for service in two thousand twenty-four, to give you a scope of that. It would, Mark is stating it would result in an estimated forty-one fire department calls annually. Twenty-one of those would be fire-related and twenty would be EMS. And he stated that the department responded to six hundred fifty, six, I'm sorry, six thousand five hundred and twenty-four calls in two thousand twenty-four. He mentions that EMS call, EMS calls would generate revenue for the town as well. So obviously, a very strong financial picture for the town on a development of this nature compared to what's transpiring there today. When I present these two towns, I always look at existing master plans or housing production plans in the, in the town. And I think you'll find, if you look at it, which I did, that it, it really fits well into what's stated in your master plan, in your housing production plan. Your master plan in the land use vision goals and actions, Goal Three, says encourage diversified housing developments that are also contributive to the Bill Ricker's state mandate, mandated affordable housing stock and proactive to address specific housing needs in town, particularly that of seniors. The age groups that will increase for the most are sixty-to-seventy-four-year-olds and the seventy-five-plus age group, which are expected to increase forty-six point eight percent and fifty-one point four percent respectively by two thousand thirty-five. These trends indicate the population in Bill Ricker is aging and the need for starter homes is likely declining while the need for elderly housing may be increasing. This increase is a logical consequence of an aging population in a society where most people on average will live into their eighties. The expected population growth in Bill Ricker, especially the increase in the elderly population, has important implication for housing planning and development. In addition to a general need for more housing units, special attention will need to be paid to housing needs of seniors and for housing stock that can adapt to needs of an aging population. That's in your two thousand eighteen master plan. It's restated in your housing production plan that was put into effect in two thousand one, two thousand twenty-five. It, in essence, restates the findings and goals stated in the master plan as it pertains to senior housing opportunities. As I've mentioned at the beginning, this is an option, it's an opportunity, it's not a mandate, no mandate whatsoever. We're just looking to provide options for the property and options for the town for a hundred acres that are within the community of Bill Ricker. As I mentioned, it's, you know, this only being an option, it's important to note that if, if this article passes, it does not allow fifty-five and over housing on the properties by right in that elderly housing overlay district. Your zoning bylaw requires a special permit from your planning board. So there is belt and suspenders on this. It doesn't, the zoning change doesn't automatically allow it to occur. It has to go back before your board to, to approve it and to put conditions on it and to negotiate benefits to not only the development, but benefits to the community as a whole. As I mentioned, fifteen percent of the units would have to be affordable. They would not only contribute to your subsidized housing inventory, they would actually beef it up, going up beyond the twelve percent state mandate. You might recall, this was contemplated last year and it never went before town meeting. It was pulled before that, but this was complicated, I should say contemplated. At that time, it had a sibling article and it was mentioned at the beginning of this hearing that this property is subject to a restrictive covenant. The siblings article that was teed up to go before town meeting last year was an article authorizing the. um was an article authorizing the select board, the board of selectmen to release that covenant to allow a project of this nature to go forward. Um, the difference from last year and this year, there is no sibling article. There is no request to to release that restrictive covenant. So um, there's an acknowledgement that it it under that restrictive covenant, uh it would not be able to go forward at this time. And again, we're not asking to release it. Our goal um is to provide an option for this site that um and then to work with the administrative staff, the planning board and the neighbors for a pro a a positive impact development on the property. Um, if the article is approved, it would provide the necessary justification for allocating significant funds uh towards strategic plans, final plans, not these rudimentary plans that you saw tonight. And materials and studies, drainage studies, wetlands delineations, as you're well aware, all of those um uh aspects that have to take place uh for development to occur. And that those will be done aimed at meeting all of the stakeholders' expectations and quite frankly, earning a release of that restrictive covenant at a subsequent town meeting. So this this article would in essence give my client a chance to prove themselves, to come back, work with the administrative staff, work with the neighbors at their own risk, at their own money, work with your board in hopes to come up with a a knockout project for the site that everybody supports, loves and wants to move forward. Then if that were the case, we would seek a a release of the restrictive covenant. Um, and and also this does not impact the town's right of first refusal, which was mentioned by the by somebody, I think the chair at the beginning, there's also a right of first refusal because of the recreational tax aspect. Uh, we're not asking for a release of that to town at this time uh or any consideration of that. Um, again, in closing, this is just providing options for the property uh that we believe fit within your master plan um and your housing production plan really right on point. And we're respectfully requesting a recommendation for favorable action on this article at town meeting, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna start with the board members, Mr. Trebu.
I actually just wanna wait um till the residents. I don't have any comment at this time. I just wanna hear what residents have to say about this and what their thoughts are. And then I could, we'll make my comment uh after they have spoken.
All right.
I get that right now.
Mr. Jerome.
Um. This is brought forward by a petitioner and I'm assuming, not sure where he went, there he is. Um, you live in the current um condominiums that have already built, correct?
Yes.
If you want to come to the podium, please. If I remember correctly from last year, um, there's actually two phases to the development and there were two different boards.
Yes.
What's the status, which one are you from and and is there a difference in the boards this year?
Um, like basically the uh like boards are like different. We're we're phase one at two sixteen. And then there's phase two, which is two eighteen and they're and they're both separate. They have different boards.
Right.
Um, like the boards um have uh changed since uh last year. Actually, there's been a big um um like turnaround. Last October, um like we had an election and uh there were um seven board members. And um up until two months ago, a month and a half ago, uh there were, there were only two left. So uh we had another election. And so we're going through, it seemed like a little like process of um uh having a stable board for a specific time. I myself have like been there for like twenty-three years. I was the third, third um like resident there and um I've been involved with um like a lot of the issues that have transpired in the uh development in phase one.
You're part of phase one?
Yes.
And you said there's been a lot of turnover of the board, which board?
Phase one.
Phase one board. And what what's the status of phase two?
Uh, well, they're here.
They are here. Do they support this? Or can I ask them?
Oh, sure, absolutely, sure.
Anyone here for from phase two that wants to speak?
You wanna, you want me to speak or do you want me to answer a question?
Either.
Okay.
If you could just, if if, what is the position of phase two?
Um, we took.
You can speak.
Yeah, we took poll and um they voted eighty-seven point five percent against this zoning.
Can I ask why? Please.
Okay, my name is Janet Moran and I'm a homeowner at two eighteen Rangeway as well as the Swanson Meadows Phase Two President and also a town meeting member. Last year, this petition for rezoning the golf course was brought before both the planning board and the select board and was voted against by both boards. But what has really changed? It's still too early to present this rezoning in to any of the town boards or a town meeting because the covenant that Swanson Meadows signed with the town of Bill Ricker in two thousand was for thirty years, which doesn't expire until twenty thirty. The covenant put a recreational overlay on the residential zone, so it could become a golf course. After which the golf course would land would then revert back to being zoned rural residential. We've all bought our homes knowing this, that it would always go back to rural residential. The acreage of the golf course would then allow for approximately, we hear forty to forty-five single family homes. And obviously the skippers are not content with that. Last year, they presented a plan for a hundred and ninety-two units. Certainly our community, our communities did not like that idea at all. So this year they are floating a hundred and sixty units as the number, but who knows what the eventual number would be if the rezoning petition were to pass. And any of these pictures that you see doesn't mean anything either. Because that's not a definite. So the difference between, we'll say forty-five homes and a hundred and sixty to a hundred and tiny, hundred ninety-two condo units when it comes to traffic and noise is highly substantial and is directly related to the amount of the housing on this land. It affects the number of personal automobiles driving in and out, community noise in general, package deliveries, FedEx, US Postal Service, Amazon, UPS, food deliveries, DoorDash, Grubhub. There's an increase in calls for ambulances, fire department and police. And even the amount of visitor traffic would be incredible, coming to a hundred and sixty units minimum. Hopefully you remember last year that Ralph Deldon and Al Patisson were the petitioners to bring the skipper's plan to the planning board. They represented that the two sixteen Rangeway homeowners were in favor of this plan, and this was not so. We know now that the two sixteen residents were never polled. Our communities, both two sixteen and two eighteen, have been polled and asked if the residents were for or against the skipper's rezoning plans to go forward. Both sides responded in the negative. Two sixteen was seventy-three point five percent against and two eighteen was eighty-seven point five percent. At that time, Ralph Deldon stated to the planning board, this is last year, that Rocco and Angela Skipper would fully pay for the sewer betterment and both communities' cost of our sewer tie-ins, the crushing of our septic tanks and the repair and repaving, repaving of our private roads and driveways. But prior to the planning board meeting at the very last minute, just before the select board meeting, the skippers refused to sign a formal finding document stating such. This year, one thing has changed. Rocco and Angelo Skipper have now reneged on any and all past promises of concessions of us, this pain for the sewer betterment, the crushing of the sub, nothing. So. So now they're offering absolutely nothing to our communities, no more dangling carrots, they were called. However, they are still trying to get out of their covenant with the town early. This year's petition once again is being brought by Ralph Deldon and Al Sisson. It now includes a few more signatures, though, I guess to give the impression that more homeowners are in favor of this position. However, it was signed by only thirteen people from two sixteen Rangeway. And most of these sig, and most of the signatures were by married couples. Ten of the signatures were from couples. That represents five households, plus three more individuals. It only represents eight households out of the forty-four households that reside at two sixteen. Absolutely no one at two eighteen Rangeway has signed this petition. At last year's meeting, Catherine, Jerry, close, okay? Stated that if you believe it's, if the members believe that it's worth going to town meeting to hear this request, then you should recommend it. If you don't believe that it is worth going to town meeting for this request, then you shouldn't recommend it. I don't ho- ho- wholeheartedly agree with this. This petition will be coming to town meeting this October and all this October and all the town boards, the planning board, the select board and the finance committee will be asked whether they recommend or not. And this shouldn't even be coming up at all. Town meeting members often look to the planning board, the experts for guidance. Many of them do not have the background or detailed knowledge to evaluate the risks, the ins- infrastructure problems, noise, traffic concerns, or the long history of unfulfilled promises. Your vote signals to the entire town meeting whether this proposal has been properly vetted or whether serious issues remain unresolved. The town meeting members will put a lot of weight as to how this planning board votes. Matter of fact, last year, the skippers pulled their warrant from the town meeting after both the select and planning boards voted not to recommend. That is how much the skippers know that your recommendation or not will mean for the, to the town meeting vote. So if you think that a fifty-five plus overlay might be a good use of this land, now is not the time. A lot can change in five years. The year twenty thirty is the time for reviewing plans, any rezoning requests and voting. Certainly not now, not before the covenant expires. This would be really extremely unfair to both our communities. The town broke its bylaws approximately two years ago when they allowed the sewer to be brought in right up Rangeway Road, right past our doorstep to service Kennedy Meadows Retirement Community, which is just around the corner from us on Nashville Road. But it didn't allow us to tie in. John Burrows of the Select Board even stated that the town did not enforce its own bylaws at the September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four Select Board meeting last year. Because of this, both of our communities are now committed to paying increased taxes over the next twenty-seven years. Plus, there was a whole situation with the golf club, restaurant, function hall in twenty thirty when the zoning changes back to residential or if it is rezoned as elderly, whatever happens, what happens to this building? Now you can't have a restaurant, function hall and a residential zone. This was brought up by one of the selectmen last year's at last year's select board meeting. Besides that, the skippers and their attorney, Brian McGill, have stated that they would continue to use this book, this building as a function hall restaurant in the future and even possibly have the current building torn down to build a much larger function hall restaurant, which would be open to the public and used for all types of functions. We've had golfers, that's, it's it's over by nightfall. Functions room, function rooms go late into the night. Which brings me to the current situation of the golf clubhouse, which is within a hundred feet of our units. The noise complaints of my community have led to numerous police calls for noise, noise disturbance up until one o'clock in the morning with the aftermath, aftermath noise in the parking lot. Our townhouse units in this vicinity have been nothing less than tortured. Young children that can't sleep, adults driven inside off their decks by loud bands with subwoofers, people singing, yelling on the golf clubhouse deck and then which then causes the adults not being able to sleep either. The skippers and Bornhang, who currently, Bornhang currently leases the golf course and the clubhouse from the skippers have already gone before the Board of Appeals last year in an effort which was thankfully not granted because of these issues. Our community has spoken with Rocco Skipper and Bornhang, asking for noise reduction into the night, but to no avail. They don't care that they are disturbing the homeowners. The town should never have granted them an entertainment license to begin with, being this close to residents. We, we were unaware of the request, so it slipped by us. One more question. Why is this petition for the rezoning of the golf course as well as land on two twenty-two Rangeway Road as well as land owned by Bedford Woods Development, but none of these owners are listed on the petition? Residents of two sixteen Rangeway are bringing the petition to rezone the land that none of them owns. Why, why are the two owners of these lands not petitioning? Well, what is that about? I mean, there isn't a resident that lives in two twenty-two Rangeway down here asking to be rezoned. Last year, the planning board's vice chair, vice chair Kelly Sardina stated that this would be spot zoning. The definition of spot zoning is the rezoning of a single parcel of land that differs from the surrounding zones, often for the benefit of a single property owner and not in accordance with the area's comprehensive land use plan. It can be considered illegal, arbitrary or discriminatory practice because it creates an exception to zoning rules for a particular property potentially harming public welfare or established neighborhood patterns. And also may I remind you that the town of Oregon does hold the right of first refusal to this land. There's so many issues surrounding this property that need to be addressed, addressed and resolved. Recommending this now would be asking the town meeting members to vote on something without the critical information that they need. This is twenty twenty-five. It's, there's still five years before the covenant expires. So in summary, our communities are sincerely asking the planning board to honor the covenant and not break it in which the town of Bill Ricker signed and devote to not recommend this petition at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Do you have any questions?
No, I just wanted, I appreciate the information. Um, I just was curious as to what each of the phases, and I think I got that. Um, just remember that this is um just a rezone. There's no project before us. Everything he showed us, uh Mr. McGrell, Attorney McGrell showed us is is hypothetical, right?
But what are.
Anything, anything that they propose in the future would have to come before this and other boards before it's approved.
What our community is saying is we want it to stay rural residential. We don't want it to be elderly housing.
They have the single family home.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Possibility of the uh ADUs.
Yes.
Okay, that's fair.
Yep.
That's your opinion.
Um, it was not just my opinion.
I understand.
It's, it's the whole community.
I understand.
That's eighty residents, I mean eighty households.
Right, thank you. Um, that was my question, Mr. Chairman. If you want to open it up to other uh members of the public, if they hands up, that's up to you. Uh, sure.
Much of what she said is hyperbole. Um, I don't want to uh take any time uh beyond uh what has already transpired here. I'd be more than happy to meet with any of you uh tomorrow, the next day or or whatever and like go through this. I like thought that she might be doing that, so.
Just so you know who I am, I don't know if you know who I am. Um, I got, I just wrote, um, a little like resume, but I've been working twenty-three years, um, phase one. Uh, I have been in front of all the town, um, my managers, uh, they got some records. Yeah, um, a T E W with Fred, uh, the uh border health with, um, like Crystal. Um, with with like Kelly. And um, this has been a good relationship over the, over the last twenty-three years. Um, is there anyone here today, and I'm not, uh, I don't want to be funny, but uh can anyone guarantee me that uh I will not be seeing something that I don't want to see in my backyard four years from now? Shouldn't we take into account of like a little bit of what's, what's like happening in the state? And um I'm worried going forward. Um, we, we like mentioned uh that it was select uh like person, Dina Favro. Well, um, I have an article here from the uh the like Lowell Sun, which stated that like she wanted affordable housing. From what I gather, half of the units have to be three bedroom. What would that do to the town? What would that do to the back of my yard? I'll be honest with you. I have one of the best views. I have one of the best views. I have the best building. I am right beside T1, the first T. I overlook the first T, beautiful bushes and grass.
Am I titleist?
Yeah. And, and, and out front, I, like I sit in my, my like rocking chair, and I see 300 acres of green grass. I'm petrified of what could happen there. And I think that it is not a 55 and over that I'm, that I'm worried about. Okay, and you have almost 100 acres and you have 150 houses. That, that like, that like density is certainly low enough, I think, like going forward here. Like some of the density now in the, in like these towns, they're like taking acre lots and they're saying that you're gonna have four 10-acre lots. This could happen. I think there's more of a vendetta than anything else, if you ask me. It's my opinion. And I'm gonna ask Brian, please go back over the notes because my friend Janet said to you that me and Al Tassoni came to the town and we represented the board. Never happened. Never happened. When, when we came, we said because we've been on the board for 20-something years, we're individuals. Now, my building is the first building next to the clubhouse. Or every single unit owner has been on the board. Every single unit, unit has been aboard. All of them voted. There are only four units that even a but. Many of the units never see the golf course. They're up against a recycling plant. They're up against trucking companies. It, it doesn't affect them at all. So here I am where I think I could be affected down the road. And since it's also zoned residential, I'm a little concerned. Our, our new management company is T R Sports Management. They involve with pickleballs, basketball courts, hockey rinks, and everything else. And I think that that land is recreational. I don't know if the town would even, they would probably rather have a, have a sports complex there, have an ice rink there, have, have a field there. This, this would really put Billerica on the map, wouldn't it? Hey, look at, come to our town. This is awesome. So I am looking into the future. That's why I think that windshields are larger than rearview mirrors. Because you have to look ahead. You have to look ahead. And how long does it take to get a permit? How long is this gonna take this to go through? There's only four years left. I mean, it's gonna take two years just to, just to go through and get their permits. All along the way, we have a right, they have a right, anyone who is far against has a right to come every time before the planning board again, before the select board or whatever they has to go through, the, the, like finance and the conservation committee, they have a right to do that. They're not giving up anything. So here they are not giving up anything and, you know, and, and, and they're worried. This is just the first step. This is just a first step in, in like moving forward.
Thank you.
I just wanted to have, I want to be like a little light. I want to leave you with a two-minute story, and this is true. And I think it relates to this, though, obviously. 10 years ago, I went to my doctor. Actually, my doctor retired, so I had to get a new doctor. And I had a bigger list of things that I wanted to ask the doctor. And so like she answered them. And then she goes, I have, I have one for you. I said, what's, what's that? She goes, if I offered you an apple or an apple turnover, what would you eat? I said, apple turnover. I love apple turnovers. And she goes, that's my problem with you. Your triglycerides, I'm looking at it through the roof. Your A1C is seven and a half. You're a diabetic. Your cholesterol is crazy. Now, if I'm gonna be a doctor, I want to ask one more question. You want an apple turnover or you want an apple? I said, give me the apple, because I had more information. And we've got a beautiful report here today. And we had a meeting last Thursday. Brian made another presentation. Let's take another vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one more question for the attorney. This is just a rezon. What is your, if you can, what is your client's intention with regard to the covenant?
At this point, would, as I mentioned, would be to earn the release.
I'm sorry, what? I didn't catch the verb. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me? I can't, I just, I cannot see the town of Billerica screen anymore for some reason. The camera's not showing it, the people speaking. Is that a technical issue?
Above my pay grade.
Okay, all right. So the answer, the answer, the question was, what's my client's intent with the restrictive covenant?
Please.
Yeah, the, the intent is, it's been stated that is to, is to either, you know, wait it out or the, the goal would be to earn the release, as I stated in my presentation. This is only an option for the property. So we would expect to spend a lot of money on plans and studies and to come back with a proposal for 55 and over that knocks the, knocks the socks off of the planning board and hopefully the butters. And, and then probably seek our special permit and then go back to town meeting and look for a release of the covenant. Or one of the other, one first, you know, kind of the, 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 the card of the horse, whatever it was first, but one of those. But the, the goal would be to earn the release of that restrictive covenant.
And is there a approximate timeframe in mind yet or no?
No. I mean, you know, there's a lot of work. The first thing would have to be done is the wetlands would be have to be delineated and laid out. Probably do a resource delineation with the Conservation Commission to confirm them. It's a, it's a very large site to do that. And then to start working with our architect and with Alan and Major to put a plan together. But we would do that in a very cooperative manner. We would not do it in a vacuum. We would do it with your planning department. And we would actually, you know, if you would allow, would even have informal meetings with your boards to discuss progress and processes as we went along. This, this is not something that would be a one-way street, that we just bring a plan in that you've never seen before with an application. Because if we did, we would expect you to say, guess what? We're not gonna support the release of the covenant.
All right, so there'd be clearly a lot of hearings between the planning board, the Conservation Commission, potentially ZBA, and various boards throughout town.
Yes, and administrative staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. Look forward to hearing from the audience. Initially, I, I was gonna wait for that, but I think I will have a couple of comments right now. So if I could through you, Mr. Chair, to the, to the attorney or the advocate for the program, project, excuse me. I, your, your, your approach looked pretty good, but you mentioned Lot B, and I think it was Lot B, that's the landlocked portion, but you didn't show any plans for that. What is, what is the intention for that, that additional parcel?
Sure. Bring that up. I'm gonna do it in, I'm gonna do it in two ways to kind of orient you to where Parcel B is. And this is the zoning plan. So you can see that where this, this line comes in, where it kind of narrows, that's the lot line of Parcel B going back. Okay, so just remember that, because you're gonna see this on the next plan, where that narrow line comes in.
But Parcel B is the one at the, to the north.
Correct.
Those, those two lines. Okay, yes.
Correct. So on this Parcel B. So there's that line that comes in. You see it? So there's really not a lot that's gonna happen. There's nothing that's gonna happen back on Parcel B. It's really just gonna be land that's gonna be used in the abstract, but the, but the units won't be back there. You can see that lot line that I showed you.
All right, so where's the corner?
Right here.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I kind of have the plan turned. I apologize. Can you, can you see?
Where the property pops off on that zoning map. So it's the.
So three rows of units are gonna be on.
There are some units we do show on the usable portion of that property. So there's no, no other, they're the same stuff, sorry.
If you want to keep.
I don't need to, but I just have that oriented. But if you need me to, okay.
All right, thank you. So the reason I ask that question is to, to the original point that I raised before we really got started in earnest, is we do have a conservation restriction that was signed by the, the owner back in, in 2000. And I thought it was, it was on Book 205, Plan 82, which I thought was Parcel B. And so do we have any way of delineating what, which, which parcel is 205, 82?
My recollection is, I'm sorry, apologize.
I was just gonna ask if you're saying a parcel ID number or a book and page number?
Well, Book 205, Plan 82, yeah. This is one of the issues that Ms. Favreau raised, and so I, just trying to make sure that it's not, you know, so the problem is, you know, the, the language here talks about that conservation restrictions perpetuity and exclusively for the benefit of the inhabitants of the town. Anyway, purposes to retain said land in perpetuity and predominantly in their natural scenic and open condition and prevent any use of said land, either alter or interfere with the conservation value of the same. And you can't build on it. You can't do soil, do trees, et cetera. And so, you know, if that's the case, then, you know, it seems a bit premature while we're having this conversation, so.
What's a plan book? What is a plan book and page?
Book 205, Plan 82.
Hold on a second. So I'm gonna share my screen. My understanding of that, it's a very small piece of land that's affected by that. Way over on the right. Can you see that?
Okay, and we're not going to disturb that in your plan, correct?
Yeah, I don't, see, it's way over here on the right. That's my, that's my take on it, because we had looked at that. It says conservation restricted area. Conservation restriction, restricted land.
There are quite wetlands there, so it's not probably just there. I know there's like four or five areas.
Anyway, if you're gonna speak, you need to come to the mic, but, okay, all right, very good. Thank you. I, I will do a little more research myself and I'll defer to whoever's next on the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are literally hundreds of trees that would be taken down. I mean, hundreds.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Sumaya.
I'll, I'll listen to the resident's comment before I have, put in my two senses. We do have a resident that wants to comment, like, just, just.
I'm just trying to regain some organization to the meeting so that we're not here, there, boom, ba, ba. So let me just go through the board first. If everybody wants to go to the residence, we're gonna go to the residence, so. Tony? Any comments to open up the?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I keep on hearing about this, the covenant expires in 30 years. But I have a document that says it's in perpetuity. It's called a power of attorney. It says it is in the intent of the grantor, Range Way Farms LLC, that the restrictive covenant and the conservation restriction recorded here with, granted this date, the tonal record shall be unlimited as to the time and be binding upon its successors and assigns in perpetuity. Accordingly, Range Way Farms LLC, Wayfield, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, hereby make constitute in a point the tonal record by its Board of Selectmen, its true and lawful attorney for it and in its name to execute any and all documents relating to the extension and or renewal of said restrictive covenant and conservation restriction and to do all things necessary or convenient to accomplish the extension and renewal of said restrictive covenants and conservation restrictions. But I don't see a date here, and it says it in perpetuity, so I'm kind of confused where this 30 years is coming from. So we have the power of attorney. Mr. Robinson has mentioned the conservation restriction, we have the, and the restrictive covenant. But again, it also points to the same Plan, Book 205, Plan 82. So yes, we'd like to, I guess, delve more into this and find out where, if this restrictive covenant is just a one small section or if it's the whole area. It does mention in these documents that the, it's limited that, as Blake mentioned, that there can't be any construction of buildings, but again, and not be more than, than the golf course or any recreational use. So I think we have to look into this a little bit more and, you know, it's kind of, and I feel the same way that we should have gotten more information and had our town council look into this more to see where we are with this stuff. Make sure we're heading in the right direction. We're not doing something we shouldn't be doing at this point in time. But no, I appreciate it. I'd like to hear more from the residents in that area. Thank you.
All right, now we'll open it up to the floor. I'm just gonna go, again, keeping some order here. I'm gonna go from the front to the back. So anybody in the front row, please stand up, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Rosalfshevsky, 216 Range Way, Unit 11-4. I'm a trustee, also a chair of the board, and I'm a town member, town meeting member. And I agree with you. I read the same covenant, and it's saying, it doesn't say anywhere 30 years. So one thing I want to address, Ralph's comment. There is a recording of the last year meeting where the board came and stated that Phase 1 supported this rezoning, but it wasn't so. At that time, Phase 1 was not aware even that such a proposal going on and any, any support requested. So since then, we, we held the vote. We had, the vote was held literally in August, but people were sent information multiple times. The vote was announced in advance many times. We had 75% turnout and 73.5% voted against the rezoning. And these results were verified and the system we used, you know, anyone who wants to verify it is welcome. Now, many of you probably remember the last year meeting, planning meeting, where the same thing was discussed. At that time, Mr. Skipper stated that he will provide some concessions to the association. I think Janet told it. Paying for the sewer's line, connecting to the sewer line, removing, crashing tanks, paving roads, and so on. The association even had some legal fees because we drafted an agreement. But Mr. Skipper said it withdrew and said it was too early. Then in February of this year, both Phase 1 and Phase 2 boards received a letter. It was forwarded to us by his team. It was a letter from Nord Bloom stating that they want to purchase the golf course. We were told that Nord Bloom specializes in commercial and recreational development, that it, talking with the town, and that the letter came from a selectman and was confirmed by a planning board member. This letter was forwarded to the select board with questions, and all five selectmen said that they had no knowledge of this letter. Nobody approached the town, they contacted the town manager. Uh, later, later, Angela Skipper confirmed that the offer was never serious, and Norbloom never contacted the town. So basically, it was disinformation to kind of put pressure on the association. Then again, in April, Mr. Skipper contacted the board, said uh that he is legally, he will legally commit to um connecting the association to the sewer line, but not uh paying for the sewer line, and also uh would legally commit to the road work and so on. He asked to call us uh the association meeting. We called the meeting. At the meeting, golf course owners retracted all this and said they they are not ready to make any concessions or promise anything until the rezoning is done and planning is done. We never actually the maps, uh, Mr. McGreal just shown, we never seen the maps. We repeatedly asked to provide us maps, some kind of information, some legal commitment about the number of units. We never heard anything. Uh, we heard the number hundred ninety units, now we're here hundred sixty. Now, specific concerns that community has. Well, first of all, traffic and safety, right? So I don't know if it's hundred sixty or hundred ninety units, but it's gonna bring thousands of cars. Now, we already have a clubhouse there, and it's it looks like they want to convert the clubhouse to a restaurant or some kind of a venue. This is gonna add additional traffic. If you think how how much traffic hundred ninety units can um can generate with delivery, you know, we uh elderly people going back and forth, you know, shopping, classes, and so on. This is pretty significant. Now, Rangeway Road already has significant traffic because there are a lot of commercial companies there. There's an auction right next to us. So the commercial traffic is pretty significant, and there is a residential traffic. Now, there're gonna be an additional traffic from this hundred ninety units. It's also because we we didn't have any maps, any plans. We don't know where exactly the road gonna be located. How this road, the noise from this road, gonna affect us? Next issue is the clubhouse, and the clubhouse is an accessory to the golf course. It's a single lot now. Now, this rezoning doesn't address the clubhouse. What exactly gonna happen to it? And depending on what happens to it, it gonna have a traffic, it gonna add noise, and it will bring safety concerns if it's gonna be a restaurant or some kind of a venue. And by the way, returning uh to the traffic issue, Rangeway Road doesn't have sidewalks, and a lot of people walking there on the road. Now imagine to this traffic, current traffic, you add this traffic from hundred ninety units plus this elderly people driving. What is gonna create there? Next issue is the character of the neighborhood um and property values, and people concerned.
I would ref- I would refrain from stating how elderly people drive.
Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right.
That's um not exactly.
I agree.
Zone, right? Um, we expect those people to follow the laws. And 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 actually, I would be on the reverse side that uh uh an over fifty-five home might only have one vehicle.
Oh, no.
Well.
In in our community.
Again, I I I'm I'm putting in a view that a a a couple might only have one vehicle, whereas a single-family home might only al- also generate six or eight vehicles. One home, because they could build a McMansion and put an ADU in, like they said, right? So you gotta understand that there are positives and negatives to each zoning layer, and you guys are highlighting the major negatives from the the fifty-five and over, but you're not, you're not um bringing in the possible negatives of the single-family zoning, which then, if you wanna talk about drivers, you're gonna have new licensed drivers that are seventeen years old. So, eh eh, I'm I don't wanna do that, right, but you brought it in. So if you have a negative here that it's an elderly driver, then you have to at least say that there's a negative with a seventeen-year-old new driver driving through your neighborhood.
But the question is, how many seventeen years old can be in forty-five houses, right? Not too many.
Uh, we don't know how many. There could be two in every house. We don't know. So I'm just trying to uh give you an understanding of, there's positives and negatives to both zones, and you're only highlighting negatives of one zone right now. And so that's a blind view. You're blinded by your view. We we have to have an open view of everything that could happen, so.
Totally right. Uh, but speaking about number of vehicles, this this is gonna be nine hundred thousand dollars units, right? In these units, people will have at least two vehi- uh two two vehicles. We have in our units, a number of uh now in our association, a lot of units have three vehicles. You know, so uh it's the number of vehicles, I think, gonna be significant. Another issue is the character of the neighborhood, and um this is a quiet and safe neighborhood, uh full of green space, and people, when people bought units, that's what they expected. They expected that the character of this neighborhood will stay. If what they present happens, it it's literally a city-like environment. You saw it's like lines and lines of these townhouses. It's gonna completely change the character of this neighborhood.
Your your neighborhood now is not lines of townhouses down the road.
It's one line, you know, it's one line on this side and one line on the other side.
Just, again, looking at your note here, right? In my view, townhomes already there would equal putting in more townhomes behind it, because the character completely changes your neighborhood when you have single-family homes by townhouses. So a- again, I I'm not, I I'm saying this just to open everybody's minds tonight, right? There are views on both sides, and I'm not computing the your zoning is as dense as what they're proposing right now.
Again, this is about density. We have forty-four units. They plan to put at least hundred sixty.
How many forty-four units on how many how many acres?
I I don't know, I'm not sure.
So I I would guarantee you that it's less than forty-four acres.
Yeah, but there are a lot of.
Density is about the same.
I don't know. If you look at this plan, it's it looks completely different. It looks like a city, you know, populated city. So, um, once again, when people bought, right, they saw what they're buying, and they were buying a property next to a golf course, and they expected it to be a golf course. Uh, then, if people researched, they would see that even if it's not a golf course, it's a residential area, rural residential with single-family houses, and that's not what's what they're proposing. Uh, next issue is the infrastructure and sewer line. So the sewer line that they're building right now doesn't have capacity for this development. So we asked the owners this question, what happens with the sewer? And the answer we got was, uh, we'll probably need to build a private sewer system for this development. Now, if you're talking about hundred sixty or hundred ninety units, what kind of a size this private sewer system gonna be, you know? And looking again at their plan, and I'm seeing it the first time today, where exactly this sewer system gonna be located, and how it's gonna impact us? Will it be somewhere close to us? And for reference, uh, Mr. Skipper built both Phase One and Phase Two, units and the sewer system. Phase One uh needed, their sewer system failed three years ago. They needed about one million in repairs. Our sewer system is failing, and we were granted an an extension until the Rangeway Road line completed. So assuming this massive sewer li- uh sewer system that they plan to build fails, how it's gonna affect us? You know, where it's gonna be located and what kind of risk it presents for us? And by the way, we use well water, right? So the risk is significant. And now, the issue about benefits for the town and taxes. So, um, Mr. McGreal here stated that it will provide a lot of um benefit for Belrika elderly who can live in these units. The issue is not many people can afford, elderly people in Belrika can afford nine hundred thousand units. So this development will likely bring elderly from all over the the region. And definitely, there gonna be an impact on the infrastructure, police, fire, ambulance, water, senior programs, and so on. And in terms of revenue, like revenue from the tax, if you think about, let's say, forty-five, fifty high-end houses, they're gonna be a lot more expensive than these units. They will probably produce amount of tax not much, you know, lower than what he projected. And then the last issue is, and I am sure other people will talk about it who lived um longer in uh in this place, people are concerned because we had so many uh construction issues, and we addressed construction issues until now, twenty-three years later. Besides construction issues, were issues of the golf ball damage, right? And these issues continued for decades, and uh owners didn't take responsibility. So there is a concern that such a massive construction will cause damage, right? And we just heard damage from drainage, you know, storm water management. Uh, so people are really concerned, and they're concerned definitely on how this development, you know, gonna impact their property prices. If instead of a golf course, suddenly gonna face this wall of townhouses in front of you, maybe somebody uh air conditioner, and without having any plans to understand where it's gonna be located, how, what kind of impact can be projected? There there are serious concerns. So so in summary, it it is not clear to us that this lot is even suitable for this kind of rezoning, considering all the issues with infrastructure, sewer, traffic, and so on, the clubhouse, this um covenant. Also, it's not clear, you know, how many units, if it's elderly, for example, how many units can be built without affecting the neighborhood and changing the the character of the neighborhood or open space. And that's why the association voted voted the way they voted, and we urged the board to vote against this rezoning.
Anybody else in the front row that hasn't spoken?
My name is Pallavi Daria. I'm from two one six Rangeway Road, Unit one nine three. I currently serve as a board member and have been a town member since the summer. I want to express my serious concern about any rezoning of the Swanson Meadows Golf Course for anything beyond what is already approved, forty-five single-family homes. As a trustee for Phase One for many years, I have seen firsthand the long-term problems resulting from construction by Mr. Sh- uh Shippa's company, which built both our Phase and Phase Two. Roofs, porches, gutters, designed to last thirty years, failed in less than ten years. Our sewer system, expected to last decades, is falling, failing. For years, the golf course owners refused to take responsibility for the golf ball damage to our properties, despite appeal to the town and even the media. This history raises serious concern about the same company undertaking such a large-scale project right next to us. Over the past year, Mr. Shippa also made multiple promises to of concessions to of the associations, and then backed out on every one of them. The association does not see these concessions as gifts, but as a small compensation for all the damages we suffered. Before any rezoning is considered, the community must have detailed construction grading and site plans, written commitments on the number of units proposed, and assurance on the stormwater management, erosion control, drainage, se- excuse me, safeguards, and accountability for the damages. When I bought my condo seventeen years ago, I expected the suburban lifestyle we all value, quiet surroundings, open space, less traffic, lower crime, and peace of mind. Rezoning for the dense fifty-five and above community would destroy these benefits, bringing more traffic, noise, and safety issue. Even now, the clubhouse already causes significant noise, and owners have taken no responsibility for it. Until we have a full transparency written commitment and clear proof that this land can handle a fifty-five-plus development without serious impact on abutters, I ask the board not to support this rezoning. Um, I also wanna, you brought up the um uh question about the um board. I just wanna make a quick comment since you brought it up. A year ago, uh, in October, we.
He asked about the board.
Right, whosoever, I'm just, I'm sorry, I I didn't mean to say you personally, but.
Did not ask about any board, I don't care.
I didn't mean, so, um.
Yeah, who's on it?
Okay. So, um, more than a year and a half ago, uh, previous board term had ended, and they refused to have an election for months and months, despite request. And finally, when we had enough uh signature to have the petition signed to remove them, that's when they agreed to have an election, and Mr. Deldon was on that board. So once uh he realized and Mr. Tassoni realized that we're gonna remove them, that's when we had the election. And I'm happy to say that we inspired a lot of people to run on the election, and we had seven board uh members filled seats in a long time. Nobody wanted to run on the board until then. And we have been really doing really good job, because the people come to us and say, you guys are doing good job. The people who left the board, two of them have expanding family, which is a good things, because, you know, they have a lot of added personal responsibility and a professional responsibility. So that's the only reason they left the board. One of the the other third person who left the board is moving out of state, and he's already put his house on the sale, and he's almost in the agreement, so anything to suggest otherwise is misleading, and I just wanted to say thank you for your time and consideration.
Next row, second row? Any wanna speak?
Thank you, and hello, everyone. Ms. Prakash Govind, uh, two eighteen Rangeway Road, Unit two one one. I'm a resident, and uh most of the residents' opinion have been already shared by uh Janet from two eighteen and uh by two sixteen. So from a resident's standpoint, one of the things that they have been talking about is noise. And I have, we have been very much on the receiving end of that, uh, that spectrum. Um, and again, we're not looking at um the the future and this, but I'm just looking at what my current experience is, and trying to imagine how it is going to be. When we moved in here, we wanted to be a quiet neighborhood, which it was, uh, quite safe and uh um residential neighborhood. Um, but we and and we haven't had any problems for quite a while, but the clubhouse is less than hundred feet from where we are. And recently, we have been having, they they have been hosting parties uh for late in the night, until one o'clock, as recent as last Saturday. And we are not able to really get any sleep. It's it's the it the noise is very bad. Uh, we approached them as to reduce the noise or reduce the hours, that has not happened. And um according to the town bylaws, we said, okay, according to the town bylaws, from seven AM to nine PM, the decibel level has to be fifty dB. From nine PM to seven AM, it has to be forty dB. We are measuring ninety dB in our bedroom with all our windows and doors closed. So this is, you know, this this huge thumping noise of the subwoofers, I don't know what they have for their sound equipment, but it is really not helping us with getting a good night's sleep on a weekend. So if this is going to be, you know, expanded into a fifty-five, you know, plus community with the clubhouse is expanded and the recreation facility is expanded, I don't know how, you know, if you're not able to take care of this problem now, how are we gonna take care of the problem then? That's that's my concern. Plus, I don't know the plans. Those plans have not been shared as to how these problems can be mitigated for the residents right now that we have, the current problems, and how will they be mitigated in the future? Uh, anyway, so those are the reasons why I am very concerned about this expansion. Um, thank you.
Next row, you're up. Oh, you wanted to go to? Yep, going by row by row.
Had such great presentations, I hope. It's hard act to follow, but I have a few things. Um, yeah, I, my name's Chevalier Govinda Rajalu. Uh, I'm a town meeting member and new recently. Uh, I live at two eighteen Rangeway Road, and I just wanted to, I guess, lend my thoughts and just tell you how I feel about it, if that's okay. And I just wanted to, I guess, lend my thoughts and just tell you how I feel about it, if that's okay. I wanted to, one thing that I wanted to mention is that, you know, from what I what I can tell, and again, I could be wrong, I feel like the main reason that a lot of residents are are considering the rezoning or that some people are, they're not that many that are, is it is fear. I think a lot of people, a lot of the residents have fear, either fear that it's gonna happen, fear that it's not gonna happen, and then if we don't agree, something worse will happen or that life will be become more difficult if we push back. And those fears aren't coming really from a clear plan or from the town, but sort of implications from from people that feel like we're being pressured. Um, and I just wanted to mention that I feel like decisions that are made uh, under fear are not always the best decisions. And I think it's it's important to just look at everything really logically and also look at both sides. So my family and I have lived at Swanson Meadows for a really long time. We have about three townhomes, so we absolutely love it there. Uh, it's it's a coveted neighborhood for a reason. It's peaceful, uh, it's beautiful, it's safe. Uh, it's semi-rural, but it has a gentle sense of community. And that's why people stay there, right? Uh, so the 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 fifty-five plus, I just am not really seeing the benefit in it. I'm not saying that there isn't a benefit in it, but it just feels like a very premature, as I think some other people have mentioned, to talk about it now, especially when it puts so, puts so much money and effort into making all of these plans when no one's really on board or there's not that many people that are really on board with it. I, you know, I I think that we need to consider what we'd be giving up with this. And again, you know, with the development in general, any kind of development, we're gonna be giving up open land, views, wildlife, the quiet character of the community to a certain extent. And those are really our greatest amenities. And once they're gone, they're gone. And once the land is gone, it's gone. I I do think it's not, it's not just about open space. It land, the land includes protective, protected wetlands. It's a habitat for protected species. Uh, whether or not everyone values that, personally, I I think it it's just important to consider, even if it's just from uh, a development perspective. I think it's short-sighted financially to not think about that because there are regulatory bodies and conservation groups and buyers with influence. And uh, I I just think that that's something that there there are other avenues that we can potentially look at. I don't think that pickleball courts and more traffic are gonna raise our property values. We've been told that these developments will raise our property values. I think property values would probably go up anyway because that's what they do, but uh, so the the other thing is, um, you know, just the the experience that we're all concerned about, the noise pollution, light pollution, is is it is is it something that, do we have the infrastructure to really support all of this? And I I wanna be clear that I'm not against growth. I'm not against the developer and I'm not trying to be contentious. I, we really wanna live in harmony. I think there has to be a solution that can benefit both residents and the developer financially and environmentally and practically. It it has to be possible because I've seen it done in too many other situations. You know, no one wants to just keep fighting. I think what we all want is a sustainable agreement that preserves our values and our way of life while also allowing the developer to move forward in a way that works for him as well. So my concern is about us being, everyone being pressured into choices that are hasty and and also don't serve us. And to just keep in mind that no one else lives here except the residents. Like we, it's actually our home, so whatever decisions are made, uh, we have to live with them on day to day. And another concern that we do, I definitely also have a concern about the clubhouse because I'm living one of the buildings that's greatly affected by the noise. And it's, and it's not an exaggeration. It's not a soundproof building and it's not really meant to be a nightclub. So that, that that's a whole other thing. And I know that's not what we're talking about tonight. But um, I I just think that I think that, I think the town and everyone should be interested in the situation that benefits all parties. And um, I just hope that going forward, we can all shape a future for the land that reflects the values of the people that live here as well. And we do really value our peace and our, the beauty and um, the wildlife and our safety as well. And I also wanted to, uh, Mr. McGrell had had a great presentation and I wanted to, because he had mentioned about the the tax revenue, which is a really great point. But I just wanted to say it's um, the 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 building conscious of units would mean a lot of major revenue. But a large, it's such a large-scale development and I do feel like, again, I could be wrong. I do feel like it would be a lot denser than single-family homes. And it's such a large-scale development that it's gonna bring large-scale costs like all the infrastructure, sewers, maintenance, public safety, that can eat into everything pretty, pretty quickly. So there are other, I just think that there are many alternative paths to financial sustainability when it comes to that, that could be far less disruptive to residents and to the town. And I think that we should just think about other options as well and not just jump into something. So that's what I think. Thank you so much.
My name is Albert Tassoni. I'm in Unit one-seventy-one. I was the president of the board before their board resigned, most of them. So going on, I've been working on this project since two thousand and twenty-one. Okay? As far as Ms. Moran using my name, because I had no intentions of coming up here, using my name, and she's in the other units behind us, Phase Two, I resent that. I resent her speaking for me and the rest of the community. Okay? So I won't even answer any of her questions. As far as the vote they took, yes. When she says the board passed it, not this board. The board before it voted to have a vote, but the vote wasn't done till after the election of the rest of this board. So as far as I'm concerned, that's out. That's seventy-six percent. I don't know how they got it. I don't know what they did and I don't care how they got it. That's what they did, okay? As far as over fifty-five, I believe our, their attorney has already told you. The savings to the town, the benefits to the town, the benefits to the community. They wanted to put, have Rocco and Angelo sign a permanent contract to what they were gonna do with us. If they don't get their way, why should they have signed up up front contract? Why didn't they sign a, a LMU? No, they didn't want that. They wanted him to commit himself. Well, I wouldn't commit myself under any conditions either. So, I mean, let's put the horse before the cart, not the cart before the horse, is what everybody's been doing. Oh, by the way, I am back on the board, but I'm not speaking from the board. I am speaking for me, my wife, and the home we live in. That's what I'm speaking for. I'm speaking for the community, okay? Whether the community believes it or not, it don't matter to me. I know down deep what I'm doing, okay? And I'll be very open. I am for over fifty-five. And believe me, as one person has said, well, think of all the ambulances and the coming in at night. Well, you can be twelve years old and have an ambulance come in at night. I mean, and I congratulate you for what you said about elderly. I'm standing before you. Does anybody know how old I am? I'm ninety years old. That's correct.
Bless you.
I'm ninety years old. And I'll keep going until this thing passes. Believe me, I won't quit. A finished speaker is a great speaker.
Any else in his row? The row behind him, if you haven't already spoken? All right, real quick, I wanna give everybody a chance here. We're pushing the ten o'clock hour, so.
Yep, yep, you're right. Forty-four units um, were built on ten acres. So if we use the same uh, like ratio now, we have a hundred acres. What's that, four hundred units? Yeah, I mean, um, that's, that's kinda misleading. See, that's what I'm saying. There's gonna be less development. I mean, there's gonna be less density. There's gonna be more open spaces than we, than we have now. Nobody, everybody walks on the road now because there's no open space. They complain about there's no open space, there's no park, you know, and there's no clubhouse. People are complaining about the clubhouse and they don't even know where the clubhouse is gonna be located. What if the clubhouse is not where it is now? It doesn't have to be now. And we are talking about things that are gonna be brought up in the future. They've gone from A to Z. We gotta go B, C, D, E, F, G. And like since this young lady brought it up, saying that, you know, they wanna throw me off, she got thrown off the board. Seventy percent of the people voted they're off the board in two thousand twenty-one.
I hate my name if you brought it up.
Thank you. We, we gotta get all the other people, sir. So anybody else in that row back there? Anybody in the last row? Going across?
I just wanna suggest that maybe this board ought to consult with town council on any legal issues regarding the property before they make any kind of decision and vote. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify for everybody that even if we voted to give them the overlay, it doesn't remove any covenant, doesn't remove any restriction, doesn't stop the clock, doesn't do anything to all of the original documents that they have. All it allows them to do is to expand on their designs, answer the questions that you all have about where the roadways are, uh, how many units can fit on the property. I gotta be pretty blunt. If I own that property and I didn't have the zoning overlay, I wouldn't spend two or three million dollars on engineering, some uh, conservation, wetlands delineations. You know, that stuff isn't cheap. And for them to spend that money and then come for a zoning change and and be told no, then they just wasted all that money. So it's a catch-twenty-two. We, I, I, we all hear the complaints from the neighbors. And I heard the fear portion of it. And it's not fear, but it's, it's the willingness to work with that person. And maybe in the future, they will have that carrot or opportunity to pay for abetment or tie in your sewers, crush your septic tanks. Until they know what their financial situation is, they can't offer up that money also, right? They're offering up money they don't have. So again, this is just giving them an opportunity to spend all their money that they wanna spend to then come back to us and talk about it again. Talk to Conservation Board of Health, um, all the internal departments. So this isn't changing what you have. It's certainly, it doesn't give them a project. There is no project. We don't know. It it's it's step A of A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L. So so we don't have G right now because they they're on A. Um, so I can't answer to how many cars are gonna be there, whether it's single-family homes or or a hundred and ninety-two units. They both have different calculations. Um, your, what they showed was a one-car garage with a very small driveway in front of it. The, how are you gonna get-
They do all kinds of pictures too, that now they took away. So I I really don't trust in any of that.
But you, in your statement, you said, we're removing the covenant. We're 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 taking, that was in your statement. I didn't stop you. But you said, when what we do here tonight, you know, removes it. Well, if we vote to support this, it doesn't change anything. It just moves it to the next spot, which is town meeting members, you're all, everybody go up, said you're a town meeting member. Well, you'll, as a town meeting member, be able to get up there and speak to all of the other hundred and forty, fifty reps and state the same thing. But I guess if I'm in the developer's shoes and I keep being told no, eventually when and if I can develop it, I might just say, I can do it and I don't have to do anything, right? So that's the, it's not fear, but it's understanding the future as other people have talked about um, and 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 what it can bring. So you can either kind of grow with the future and work with them or you can be that adversary force, right? That just was like, no, and then you are stuck with, right, something at some point. So it's not a fear, but it's an understanding of the situation that you are in and then we are in as a board to make a greater recommendation because our master plan does say, we need elderly housing. That is like a major goal of our town. And that was voted on by town meeting members. A goal of bringing elderly housing to our town, so.
There was an elderly housing plan that hasn't even been developed behind like the O'Connor hardware.
We own that property.
Right, and it's owned.
But the other, right, but that's, again, it's not there, it's not in front of us, so it's not-
But it's, there is land.
Not developed.
Done that and not-
They can. And it's and it's irrelevant to this hearing. So we're we're trying to make a decision on whether or not we give them the go-ahead to spend their money. It's not a project. It's not gonna take away your life. It's not taking away covenants, restrictions.
No, but when it goes to town meeting in October and it it, the the planning board says, yes, we recommend it. That's gonna carry a lot of weight of them changing zoning right then and there to R-two. I mean, to um, the fifty-five plus.
Yes.
So it's not like, oh, this is just step one. I mean, that, step two is right there and then-
Overlay, right? It's not changing the zoning. It's an overlay. Meaning rural residential still lives as the base zoning. Right? So in five years, they could say, we still just wanna develop rural residential. Just because we put this overlay on there, doesn't stop rural residential either. See that, I I I think you-
It doesn't go away?
No, it does not go away. Rural residential is the base zoning. We would be putting a fifty-five elderly housing overlay on it. Meaning if they select the elderly housing and that's what they pull their permit on and get approved, then the the rural residential goes away.
And you did hear that Brian-
Until then.
Say that they're gonna look to have the covenant released early.
That's up to them to earn the trust of everybody if this goes forward, right? So it's an overlay, right? So eventually, if they want to use it, they can act on it. If they don't, it stays there. It never, the rural residential doesn't go away until the elderly is built onto it. Um, so today- Okay, um, so you know, it I think a lot of you are at the middle of the alphabet in the steps. When we're at a a time of a decision for options. So the attorney has his hand back up. I'm gonna go back to him for a follow-up, please.
Yeah, I know it's getting late, Mr. Chair. I just wanna clarify a couple of, a couple of things. Um, first of all, on this conservation restriction that's been banted about, um, if I could just share my screen quickly, because- So this, this is the conservation restriction document, okay? This is the one that talks about no buildings, dumping, removal of trees, et cetera. And you have referenced the plan. It's Plan two-oh-five-eighty-two. It says, uh, Range Way Farms hereby imposes on the land in Bill Ricka, shown- Range Way Farms hereby imposes on the land in Billricka, shown as conservation restricted land on the plan, okay? So it specifies that, that that's what it is. And when, when you go to that plan, which I have a clear copy of it now. Let's get to that. That's the piece on the right-hand side. It's only, it's only four acres of land that's impacted by that conservation restriction. Can you see it in the hashed area?
Yes.
Great. And then, you know, one of the speakers talked about, I just wanted to point this out. Parcel one on this plan is phase one of the condominiums, five hundred fifteen thousand square feet, forty-four units, eleven thousand seven hundred twenty-five square feet of land per unit. Parcel two is, is phase two. That has thirty-six units with five sixty-one, one fifty-three square feet, fifteen thousand five eighty-seven. What we're proposing is a max here, you know, as I said, one sixty-two, and we've already done the financial analysis at one fifty, we're going south pretty quick. But at one sixty-two, it would be twenty-eight thousand three hundred twenty-six square feet of land per unit. And I did, as, I don't think I could have stated it any better. People, people are in the middle of the alphabet. They're talking about special permit condition. Talking about things that your board would deal with if this ever went forward through a special permit process with required studies, multiple conditions that would go on a project like this. With all due respect, folks are getting way ahead of themselves and just jumping to conclusions that don't make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, I do have one question and I want to, how did that parcel be come about as part of the petition here? As last year, this wasn't part of the petition for the rezoning. And now all of a sudden, we're adding this additional parcel that's not owned by the skippers. How, how is this? And, and why, if you could elaborate on that? I think you're on mute, sir.
That was included last year.
It was?
Yes. Yeah. If I can just ask my client, Angel, am I correct on that? Mr. Court.
Parcel B always was included. Probably the third parcel that's added, just for clarification, is two twenty-two Range Way. Excuse me. Two twenty-two Range Way is a new addition to this, which gives us access to our property through a different means. So two twenty-two Range Way, I don't know the book and page, but.
Yeah, it's a small piece. It's above. Let me just bring up, just for clarification for the, for the chair to answer the question.
And I.
So this is the piece.
Last year, the big difference that, you know, you guys don't have this year is that sister article, you know, asking for the, the breaking of all the covenants, so.
Right. The only piece that was added, Mr. Chair, is this lot one down below. Right here. Here's the lot one. Because we wanted to obtain another means of access off a Range Way road to have, you know, for, for safety purposes, et cetera.
So there were a couple of follow-up hands. So we'll start her and, and the gentleman behind you also wanted to follow up. And let's keep it to the project specific and not who's on a board, who's not on a board, because that doesn't matter. Boards don't matter to us in terms of zoning. It matters to you guys, right? And, and I care that you board members do good for your, your residents in your community. But the, you guys pointing fingers about who's on a board and who's not, that doesn't change our minds one way or the other, so.
I didn't bring it up. I was just.
But I don't, I don't want to continue it. So if that's your point, I'd, please don't make it. I don't want to continue the bickering.
Just for the record, I want to let you know that the board listened to all the residents because that's our duty and that's what we represented to you. But also, we met the owner several times. So it's not like we completely said, no means no. So we've done everything we could, try to balance it as well over the years. So that's all I want to just.
Thank you. Follow-up? Guide your hand up?
I think a lot of things became clear at the meeting today as to, you know, where this exactly stands. And one of the problems that we have been dealing with is lack of the process steps, the information that is needed and what this really means. And if this means that we are going to the, you know, the release of the covenant much sooner, then we are all very concerned. And that, I think that was one of the main things that was, you know, we don't want to see a building next door without really talking to us and understanding what our problems are. I think lack of information was a very important step, but thank you for clarifying the steps and the process.
Steps will still happen. Covenant is still in place. And what we say tonight does carry some weight at town meeting, but there are a lot of town meeting members that can be swayed by, you know, representatives on the floor, especially those that live there. So we appreciate everybody coming out tonight and, and speaking. We would be remiss, Catherine, are there any hands on Zoom?
Can you call for them?
So if there's people on Zoom that are here also to speak on this particular agenda items, it looks like we do have about twelve people on Zoom, please raise your hand and we will bring you in. But I don't see anybody putting their hands up here on Zoom.
Just a reminder, raised hand is a Zoom feature. Do not put your hand in the air. We cannot see you.
At the bottom of your screen, there'll be a hand and it will prompt us that you're there wanting to ask a question.
Been before.
So.
You can, it'll only work if you were in the audience, not, not.
So I'll start back with the board members, Mr. Traboo, after we've heard the public.
I mean, I mean, so how I look at this in all honesty is, is just, you know, we have two petitioners' articles on this agenda. You know, both have been withdrawn in the past from town meeting. Both have gotten, you know, a negative kind of thing, kind of rejection in the past. But my, my question is, is, you know, I think the difference tonight is, is regarding the, these two articles is, I believe one article probably listened to what the residents' concerns with and the other one clearly has it. And that's just by seeing all the infighting and all the stuff going on, it's, it clearly seems like there hasn't been the back and forth, the bickering with it. It just, you know, I, I haven't had, you know, any confidence with it. And I understand why people don't, don't trust, because we've had other previous zonings that have passed town meeting and people have gotten burned. And so then they go, oh, you know, trust, future, everything else. And then we just keep moving forward with that. And, you know, and I've had a lot of, I've, trust me, I've, I'm known for a lot of people for being the, you know, the pro-housing guy because I've and, but I've had it usually most of the time. It's, it's because I've had essentially a gun to my head on it. You know, the zoning was already in place and the project was meeting all the requirements. And, you know, a judge was not going to, was, was gonna rule in favor of the applicant. And so, or, you know, you can have a thing where a zoning is passed. Then they sell to someone else and then someone else has another plan. And so I can understand why people tonight are like, oh, what's, because, and, you know, I understand that some of you are ahead in the process. Some of you are ahead. You're thinking way ahead, but I don't find that, I, I don't want you to know, like, I, I, because, you know, a lot of the times, this is kind of rubber stamped through on, on, you know, it can happen where the zoning's passed, covenant drops, and then, you know, you know, we can negotiate with a developer on creating a project, but whatever they, and their plans can change as well. But then it's, you know, then we're back. You know, if it goes right, it goes right. But if it goes wrong, you can sit here being in court, back and forth, people just getting angry, agitated. I've just seen that so much that it's, it's, it's agitated me to an extent. So I'm very much more hesitant, especially to is that if you want to get a, you know, if you want to think about the future, think about the present moment and go with that and go, hey, and meet people where they're at. And, and try to negotiate and try to make things better at the present moment. If you are already being dismissive of people before you have, in the first step of the process, well, it's gonna be the same with, with the last step of the process. It's kind of like a relationship. Right? If someone's dismissive of your concerns at the beginning of a relationship, well, looky here, at the end, they're, they're dismissive, they're dismissive in the middle and they're dismissive there. So how is that any different with this? So and I've just, I've seen it so many times already with stuff. And so, you know, this is where I have more, I would say, as a voting member, I have more discretion. You know, we're just recommending or not recommending, and we can have our reasons or not our reasons for it. And the land court judge can't come in here and say, you know what, you're wrong, and, you know, approve it otherwise. And so that's, a lot of the times, that's where I've, I've been at with some projects where I'm like, all right, well, this does follow the law and so we do have to approve it. And it's, you know, it's not regarding whether the, you know, reasons of, you know, and I just try to make sure people negotiate in good faith with you. But I haven't seen, I haven't seen that to, tonight regarding at least this article. I've seen residents come up here. I've seen, if anything, I've, I've seen that, that they've been dismissed. And if this is at the starting of the process, I can't imagine what it's gonna be like in the middle and the end. You know, and I just, if, if that's how it is, is that the, the people right now bickering at each other and being, being like, well, this person's, you know, basically like dumb or whatever, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't make for a good process. So all right, just from that alone, I don't, I don't want to move forward with it. I've rejected this twice for the same reasons. It's, it's, and what has changed, though, you know, the last two times, I don't feel like anything has changed. And that's what's been made, made me very angry with this, is, is I'm like, all right, cool. Did you, did you go with the residents here? Has there been any type? Because instead, that, i- i- it feels dismissive to them. And, you know, it feels dismissive to me too, because I'm like, you know, because there's other people that go and, and do actually try to do their homework and get with that. And, you know, you can do, you can build, you could make a fancy plan. And then you can either, you could follow through with it, or you could not and sell it to someone else and do whatever. So that's just, th- this whole time, I've just been listening to people say that they're against this project. So, and I have a discretion as a planning lawyer, I'm, I'm just, I don't, unless there was a drastic turn in terms of you guys being able, and it's not gonna happen tonight, I don't, I don't feel comfortable moving forward with it. And it's not any of whatever, whatever Dina said, I, no, irrelevant to, it's, it's just what I'm hearing right now. It, it hasn't, it hasn't been. And that's why, like I said, I've rejected it twice already with it. So that's just my opinion. I don't have anything else more to say. I think the residents clearly stated what their opinions were. You know, again, I've been in favor of all the elderly housing. I've been, I've been basically the housing czar person. So, but I just, there's just been so much that's been going on with this. I, I just don't actually feel comfortable in supporting it. Thank you.
You can leave that on, Tony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've raised some concerns already. I have a couple more. Previously, there appeared to be a pharmacy, a, what do you call it, Merc, Dupont owned the land previously. Trying to find, see if I could find any environmental concerns. I can't find anything right now. So I don't know if there was anything done when it was first built or not. And that was one of the reasons why the golf course was built and, and this covenant was put in place. So I've heard some concerns, you know, I don't, so clearly right now, I'm hesitant in supporting because I need to get, we need to gather more info as far as I'm concerned on this. Another concern I have is if you go back and look at the history, there are certain people who are supportive of this project and they've complained about living next to a golf course, okay? You know, they moved into a golf course neighborhood. You know? And then the third thing is restrictive covenant. Here we are, we're talking about busting the restrictive covenant. And then after we're done hearing these people, we're gonna have another people, couple come in here on our next agenda item, looking to put a restrictive covenant on. You know, what, what message are we sending those people? You know, that, hey, we can just bust it further down the line. You know, I just.
Clarify, Tony, we aren't voting to take away any covenant.
No, 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 I understand that, but the attorney has mentioned it.
In the, if they want to earn.
Right. No, I understand that.
The ability to ask for that.
I understand.
Today.
Fully understood. It's just.
Just make sure you're.
I fully understand. I heard, but.
You just.
No, no, but I'm mentioning that, you know, attorney's words, okay? So I said it's a concern. I just said it's a concern, okay? And then we're gonna vote, you know, then we're gonna have the next person come up and ask for a restrictive covenant. I just, it's, it's kind of interesting. They said it was concerns, okay? I didn't say it was, it's concerns right now. And so this, this is what I'm having, this is where I am right now with this project.
Mr. Sumaya.
I mean, I. Thank you. Just a few words. I mean, I don't know if I'm hearing, if I'm hearing it right. So I hope I'm hearing it right. So we want housing production. But we are, we are rejecting this applicant for his zoning. We want elderly housing and then we are thinking about rejecting this applicant for the overlay. So either that's what we want or that's, that's not what we want. So if we're looking to, I mean, to add to the, to the housing stock, I think this is, this, this makes sense. And if it's, if we not, if we don't, if we, we may be saying that we want the stock, but at this end, we are, we are laying barriers for people not to, not to build. So how, how, how are we helping them in building if we are putting barriers? So, I mean, I, I think the project, I mean, they haven't put the project together, but the overlay, to me, I think it, it makes sense. Especially if trying to keep the elderly into, into the community. That's my, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm, I'm, I'm greatly conflicted by this and I, as much as some folks believe that there's been no progress from a year ago, I think that we have. And I was really encouraged by a few of the comments that were made about the fact that some of the veil of mystery is being lifted. You know, this is, this looks like a really enticing project. You know, we've got, you know, the, the sunset looming. It's still five years away for the golf course. And we have some deliberate thought that is being applied. And what really looks like a pretty nice plan to move forward. And then you look at the, the, the tax, the income benefit, that, that becomes very nice. But then we have a large number of folks, we don't normally have people that come to our meetings. Typically, it's just the seven of us looking at each other and, you know, saying, gee, we'd sure like another opinion. And so I appreciate the fact that it is motivated folks to come in. I'm in Precinct Six. And I recognize a lot of you as relatively new town meeting members. Why? Because you've gotten energized over first the betterment and now this, this issue that is, that is coming forward. But most of you are, are, are coming in to say no. And so that is the, the challenge that I have, is that the message hasn't been communicated crisply and in a positive way. Now, maybe that's because there's some bad history with the developer and there's some trust that hasn't been fully rebuilt and needs to be overcome. And so ultimately, I'm, I'm gonna have to go, you know, with the more conservative approach, that I think that we're almost there, but we're not there yet. And so maybe we can get a little more communication, a little more goodwill established and, and we can get no, more of the folks that are gonna be directly impacted to say, yes, we really like this. So anyway, thank you. thank you.
Mr. Drew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, actually Blake said something really well, and so did you, as a matter of fact. This is simply a zoning, excuse me, it's a zoning overlay. This doesn't change a thing. The covenant's still in place. In fact, I believe the covenant to remove it is a vote of the select board. Is that accurate? Yes. Sorry.
Chair, through you, the, there's a few covenants that we, as we've kind of discussed today, but the main one, the 2030 development of the golf course area itself, I believe that is a town meeting vote. So that is why we say there is not a sister article with this one.
Okay.
If they were to earn it with that special permit process through you guys in the future, then they'd go back to a future town meeting event to ask for it at that point.
So this, the chairman put it well. There's, this changes nothing. There's a lot of hoops to go through before anything gets built. It's got at least four, almost five years, just under five years, I guess now. I'm going to support the article just to keep this moving forward. And I would encourage, again, as I did in the previous discussion, I would encourage the residents and the developer, the owner, whoever the main party will be, to communicate. You all need to know what each other's, our concerns are, and take them seriously. And I say that to the owner, I say it to the attorney, as well as the residents here. Express yourselves to the owner as the way you did tonight. And you may have done that, you may think you've done that. Yes, he heard you, I don't know. I haven't been there. But I think the article itself is worth to go to town meeting. As the chairman said, this changes nothing. And as Mr. Semaya said, we're looking to develop housing, we support senior housing, this does that. At least it's the first step. And it is step A1, when we have 27 others or so to go through. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drew. I'm kind of with Blake to some extent. I'm very torn, because the residents have spoken. In a vast majority, that more have come up to say no than yes. I think a few have also, and oh, we didn't really know, maybe that that was going to stay, or little things that have been clarified in this time. So I, I am conflicted, because I think we, as a town, have a tendency just to say no as the easy way out versus trying to work with that person. And, and it's, as Mr. Drew said, we've got, well, you know, just under five years for that working together to happen. They would have to earn our trust through you to release that covenant, because that was my main reason last year that I did not like this Warren article, because they had the sister Warren article to release it. Whereas this year, it doesn't. So it kind of tells me they do want to work with the residents and the neighbors in the process over the next few years to earn the trust to work with you guys to design a development, maybe that will be less impactful than you think it might be. But you'll never know if we just say no. We'll never know. And our town has spoken about elderly housing. We've done other overlays, and, and they don't produce anything. They produce one or two projects. I think this one is, I'm with Mr. Drew. I want to, I want to let this get to town meeting floor. I don't know if we have the support tonight from everybody. But if it doesn't get supported, I would ask, as Mr. Drew said, everybody just take a step back, let the old stuff go, try to move forward, work with the owners, and then maybe if it doesn't happen this year, next year. But, yeah, it's, it's a tough one, because we sometimes have to look for, look out for a greater good versus just a small portion of our community, right? That's where the elderly housing needs come in. And, and sometimes those needs are above and beyond individuals. Because it's, you know, we're, I'm not 55 yet, but I will be someday.
Be yourself.
You know? So it, it's something that I think, you know, our town needs to think about very swiftly and hardly. So I'd be remiss to ask Catherine or Jane for their input for the board members.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you and all the public. I know I've had some back and forth emails as well with some of you. So, again, there's, there's been a lot of clarification today that the zoning does not release any restrictions early. The special permit process that we're talking about, I just want to clarify that. If the overlay goes through, and they do move forward with an elderly housing project, it will come back to a public hearing, except that time, that's when we talk about the road layout, the building layout, the infrastructure, what's wetlands, what is, don't touch that, that's a permanent conservation easement, all of those technical details, that plan that everyone wants to see finalized so badly, that is the special permit process. It will be a public hearing, you will get that mailed notice, just like you did for this one. Sorry, zoning is not a mail notice. You will get mailed notice for a special permit hearing, though. So similarly, if this does not go through, if a single family subdivision goes in, that subdivision is also a public hearing through the planning board. You will get that mailed notice. We will look at road layouts, we will look at infrastructure again. The only difference between the two processes is with a single family subdivision, there's no building form to be reviewed. So you don't see where the homes themselves or the driveways are with the subdivision plan. With the elderly special permit, you would see that. So whether it ends up being single-story twin homes, like the example rendering they showed today, or whether it's something else, it still has to meet those zoning standards, but it might be two stories, or it might be townhomes instead of twinhomes. But it has to meet those zoning standards of that overlay. As far as kind of getting through that and setting that to the side for today's question and town meeting's question this month, which is, what is the real vision for this town, for that property? Do you want it to be elderly, or do you want it to be single-family rural residential? I think we heard pros and cons to both of those, at least a little bit. There's a lot of that clarification that kind of got in the way and muddled it. But I think I did hear that. So I left notes for myself I'm trying to read at the same time. Sorry. Yeah, so we heard disagreements with the abutters. I imagine that the planning board members probably don't agree on what the overall vision is, and neither will town meeting members. That's why we take a vote. Did I leave anything out? Are there any open questions I didn't answer?
Got one question. Have we developed this? Right? I mean, recreation is part of the long-range master plan as well. Well, how do we make up this recreation site?
If who develops this?
If it gets developed, we use that as recreation. Where in the town are we going to make up this recreation? Because recreation is part of the master plan as well.
So if it's not rezoned, the single-family rural residential zoning would be what applies here. So that property owner can do what they want within whatever zoning their grants-
Even if it's on the golf course?
That's property.
That's how it's owned.
You know, we do want recreation, but we want that public recreation. Golf courses, you have to pay to play. It's not open to the public, right? So that's not the recreation that our master plan is asking for. We're looking for trails, we're looking for things that people can do for free, you know, with their families, not, oh, I got to go spend, you know, $200 for a round of golf and carts for four people, you know? Our recreation, that's exclusive recreation.
Very brief, fun, I'm going to get that. Ron's, I'll be brief, because obviously numbers is dragged out tremendously. Just from our end, just because a lot of people are asking about vision and what we're doing. Again, just to reiterate, we are just looking for the opportunity to explore options for this property. Obviously, like you said, you did most of the heavy lifting here, so I don't just need to reiterate everything you said. I mean, you hit the nail right on the head. I do feel some of this has been a little bit one-sided. Obviously, I, we don't minimize any of their concerns, but you've only heard one side where we did offer a meeting to every unit owner to come by, to walk through this process. Brian, our attorney, went through all these things. There's 20 people there. So, I mean, we try to give information, but we can't drag them there. So we are trying. There obviously is some mistrust in the process along the way, whether it's valid or not. Those are their feelings. What I told some of the people who were at the meeting, I said, I'm not looking for them to exactly trust me. I think I am trustworthy, but that's, I can't control that, how they feel about us. I'm asking them to trust your process. So by opening up this zoning, the special permit process is a long, arduous process. If we go through this special permit process, there's a good chance that it lasts longer than the covenant, that we may not even be ready by the time the covenant is ready to be lifted. Because like you said, we've come up with the conceptual plans on paper, they work. We were, like I said, we hired these firms to come up with this. And basically, we were using this meeting as a launching point for it, because we don't want people getting caught up in the numbers and the details, because clearly, that's what happens. And as you saw tonight, where's the clubhouse? Where's this? Oh, look at the number. 162 is probably pretty maxed out from an ideal standpoint. We haven't delineated wetlands, we haven't worried about drainage, or roads, or engineering. That's a perfect world there. It's probably, might even get whittled down from there. And like I said, in the process, they will still have a voice, because if they come back with pitchforks and, and everything, again, at the special permit process, you guys are going to say, well, you guys haven't created any trust along this process, so get out of here. And now, we've just spent an absorbent amount of money just to get kicked out of here. It doesn't make any sense. So we do, like I said, want to use your process as a collaborative process to keep you guys in the room, to work with the town planner, to, we see that the, the master plan, what the goals are, we think this could fit as something that works for the town, for us, for the residents. Now, that process, if it's not collaborative, it's just going to be a waste of time and money. We need to come up with a project that, there's going to be give and take. Are we going to get everything we want? Most likely not. Are they going to get everything they want? Probably not. But we're hoping that we can work together on this and come up with a project that everybody can be happy with. So next time, when we have a public hearing, they can't say, well, they didn't talk to us, they didn't involve us, because we now have to say, buildings will be here. These are the requirements we've, we've met. And we do, we're not underestimating how important that collaborative process is going to be. Because like I said, by the time we come back here for a special permit meeting, it's, it'll be a waste of time if we don't use anybody. So like I said, I do just want to wrap it up. I echo everything you said. I think it's, it's the exact meaning of us, but I did want to give you a little bit of clarification on our goal. Like I said, we get the zoning changed. It's, it's start the process of working together. It's not, obviously, shovels and grounds or anything like that. There's, it's going to be a long drawn-out process, too. Like I said, we've hired a repula engineer. That's why I thought we were coming back with a more professional plan with repula engineers, repula architects, the financial impact study. We're getting all our ducks in a row. And so now, when we are going to move forward with actual engineering, we got these guys already kind of doing a little bit of the groundwork, and now they can get into the nitty-gritty, and we can really start working together and hopefully regaining trust through the process. So I appreciate all of your time tonight. I know this was probably far longer than anybody desired. So I do appreciate you guys taking the time tonight. So thank you very much.
You want to follow up, sir?
I just, I met Skip.
Can you step up to the microphone, name and address, please, for the record?
I live on 216 Range Way Road, Unit 121. And I'm, I'm a new member on the board for Phase One. I met Skip yesterday. We spent some time talking to each other. I think there is a trust issue, and that's in the past. I'm, like I said, a new player. And I think we need to get together, all of us, the developer, the board, the two phases, and come up with some guidelines. What are your expectations? What are our expectations? And then involve the town and the town's process in helping us create a roadmap. I'm willing to sign up for that. I'll, I'll work with you anytime, any day of the week, to help create this roadmap, because of the unknowns, people are not loosening up. Everybody is tightening down. And the only way we're going to get it done is to talk to each other, be open and fair, and just create a roadmap. You know, we built, I used to build missiles that had a five-year cycle, life cycle, cycle time to build. When I got done, when I worked for Raytheon, we built them in a year and a half, just before the Iraq War. So where there is a will, there is a way. And I have nothing against anybody. We are all human beings. We are all here to live a decent life. Let's get together. I'll work with anybody. Skip, I'm going to say it right to you. Okay? Ralph, I say it right to you, too.
Right back there.
And now. So let's do it.
Thank you. Bill, quick grace, please. Let's wrap up our, we'll give you one minute follow-ups.
Okay, just a couple of things. So, does the town not have the right for refusal up until 2030?
This doesn't change it.
So when 2030 comes around, can the town purchase the property?
If, if they want to sell it, yes.
But if they already have plans to do something, how can they do that?
Developing and selling are two different things.
Right. But if they go through the process of developing it, and then now 2030 comes around, and the town decides, you know what, we want to purchase the property?
Not how it works.
That's not how it works.
If, only if they want to sell it. If the skippers are going to keep it and develop it, that's not selling the property.
Okay.
Right?
All right.
There's the first right of refusal. There's, you know, unless they put it on the market, we, we can't just go to them and say, oh, your covenant's up, here's, here's money, we're taking that property from you.
All right. Well, thank you for clarifying. And secondly, I know Mrs. Semaya was talking about elderly housing, you know, being available, you know, affordable. Am I wrong? Did they say 900,000 for a unit? Well, I don't know how many, I'm, I mean, I wouldn't mind selling my house and moving to something smaller that I could afford. But to go up 900,000, that's not affordable. It's not. And I think you're kidding yourselves, thinking, trying to use that as an excuse to push this along. Again, I think you really need to talk to legal and make sure you dot all your i's, cross all your t's before you go ahead and vote. 900,000 is not affordable.
If I could respond, it's not the affordable price.
Jane, can I?
No, we're-
Yes. You understand it?
Wait, one minute.
One thing in response to Angela, the reason people didn't come to this meeting, because it's the third meeting that they announced, and they don't answer any specific questions, right? I would think just out of just respect, they could have shown us the plans, right? Present the plans. They didn't answer any of this. So, and this is to the point that there need to be some respect, right? We were trying to, to talk to them for a year and got no response. The second point is this, if you, if their zoning is approved, right, the price of these properties are going to go up like 50%, 100%. The town still has the right of the first refusal, which means that you wouldn't be able to afford this property, because it just jumped up like 50%, just after, if it's-
You think we can afford it now?
I don't know. But you will be forever not able to afford it.
Your town meeting reps are doing your homework. Find out if our town can afford the property.
So then, then-
Have a, a bank account sitting waiting for us to purchase property. We have a little bit of money.
Right, but you still, you still, you said yourself that-
That's, that's what I'm saying, Tony, is we do not have a bank account waiting to purchase large tracts of property like this.
Right, but you said you, yourself-
Refusal is, is not market rate, but at the a- assessed rate of the property, which we're, you know, I don't know how many, what's fifty acres? I mean, how many millions of dollars are we talking? The town would have to fork over yours and my taxes for nothing, right? Because we ain't going to run a golf course. We ain't going to run a nine hole golf course, because that's, um, you know, we're not going to make money on a nine hole golf course. And I won't vote for us to buy a nine hole golf course.
And I think you made yourself a point that you didn't want to give up the right of, of the first refusal, right? So if you don't-
We aren't here tonight, we aren't giving up anything.
But this price affects-
You're not giving up anything. Okay. Mr. Sumaya, your follow-up.
Yeah, um, wait, I don't, the, the price of the unit of, of nine hundred is a speculation. Nobody knows what the price of the unit is going to be.
It's true.
So it could be six, 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 I mean, I don't know. I don't want to put, I don't want to put a number on it. And then there was, there's also fifteen percent, um, of, affordable, affordable units. So I think that's, I mean, the fifteen percent is, is actually higher than what the state is asking for. Well, that's, the state is asking for twelve. We, the, here in town, we're asking for fifteen percent less than, less than way more than what the state is asking. So I don't think we can impose more than what we, than what we already have on the books. So the amount of nine, nine hundred is very speculative.
Market rate.
So it's very speculative. I don't, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to be-
Market rate was the eight seventy-five, and then the number that we were given for the affordable units, fifteen percent of the total number would be three hundred and ten K was the number that they listed for the affordable units. Um, so there is a, a stark difference between market and affordable. And the fifteen percent, um, to speak to that, our town, as many of you may or may not know, the state requires us to have a minimum of ten percent affordable housing in our town. Otherwise, we'd be subject to forty B developments that are by right essentially. Um, so in the last few years, if you watch the zoning board of appeals, they split lots. And every time they add a lot, that reduces our percentage of affordability. Now we have A and Rs, and we have all kinds of state mandated things that are going to increase market rate housing in our town. So we, as a town, have to jump at opportunities that are going to increase our affordability. Otherwise, we could be blinding ourselves to a massive building development, like you see on Middlesex Turnpike. If we say no to something like this, that could increase our affordability rate for many years to come. So it, it's, 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 I, it's your backyard. And it's tough. That's, it's private. Somebody else already owns it, and when they want to develop it, they can, but we can't tell them to do it. Right? So that's, again, property, you have private property rights. You as condo owners don't necessarily have it, because you're in an association, right? You, you own your condo and everybody owns the land. But private property owners have, in, you know, rights. So. Say that again?
Said it was owned by the-
There is a parcel that is back there that is owned, but the property that Sunrise, is that the name? Sunrise owns, they own five, seven acres, and they haven't developed it, they haven't come to any boards as far as we know to, you know, start a process for that. It's just land sitting there right now.
Town doesn't build homes.
Cider Mill.
No, but I mean, you can, if it's zoned as fifty-five plus, why are you holding on to that way? You need elderly housing.
We, we don't own that parcel of land that's owned for the elderly housing. Mill is not zoned for housing. That, that's not really a consideration. Again, we could talk about any property and put zoning wherever it is. We're here tonight about this property, not any other property. Uh, Mr. Attorney, uh, you'd like to, you have your hand up.
Real quick, I just, I'm just trying to give the board as much information as, as possible for you to, uh, digest and making a decision. But on the, uh, affordable component, the fifteen percent, so if it was, you know, a hundred and fifty units, say, uh, uh, times a fifteen percent, um, it would be twenty, say twenty-three units. You're allowed to condition that seventy percent of those affordable units could have local preference for Bill Ricker residents. So those, those affordable units could take, they could have a priority for, uh, uh, Bill Ricker, uh, residents. And that's, that's, you can define that as Bill, Bill Ricker residents or town employees. It can be, it can be fairly broad, but I've got a lot of, uh, uh, inclusionary zoning experience with projects I've done in the, in the, um, uh, that is allowed as a condition.
Thank you. All right, we've, um, heard from the public, we've heard from the staff, we've heard from the board.
For that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Article thirty-eight.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to the board recommend Article thirty-eight to the fall town meeting.
Second. Second by Evans. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's Mike, Ed, and Evans. And all those not in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Tony, Blake, and Chris. Um, so we have a tie, um, which in zoning world means it fails.
Town meeting world.
But for town meeting, um, it would be up to the petitioner now, uh, because it wouldn't necessarily be a full recommendation. It would be a fifty-fifty split of our board. Um, and so that would, you know, again, be up to the petitioner to continue to move forward with a split decision from our board.
For that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Article thirty-nine for the fall town meeting, zoning bylaw amendment one sixty-four, Concord Road.
Second. All those in favor of opening Article thirty-nine? Aye.
Who was the motion and second on that?
Yes, uh, Ed Giroux, Tony Ventreska.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney Jim Dangora, for, um, the petitioners. This is a petitioner's article. Uh, been quite, quite an evening. I, I'm going to try to be as concise as I possibly can. So-
Got all night.
Yeah, we'll be having breakfast together in about thirty minutes. Um, Article thirty-nine, um, I, I, I know some of you folks are, are familiar with it. It is a rezoning article where, uh, the petitioners seek to rezone, uh, the property from neighborhood residents to neighborhood business. Uh, but the article is a little more than just a rezoning uh, article. It is an article, uh, that supports a local business that has provided good and valuable services uh, to the residents of Bill Ricker for over, uh, twenty-two years in the form of accounting services and financial planning. Now, uh, by way of background, Brian Gogan purchased one sixty-four back in two thousand and three. Um, shortly thereafter, he went to the Board of Appeals, obtained a, um, home use occupation special permit to run his financial planning and his, uh, CPA business out of the, uh, the home. So they've been operating under that special permit for, uh, again, the last twenty-two years. Uh, through that time, he's brought on Sean Malone, uh, an accountant. He's been with Brian since two thousand and three. He brought on Dana Redden, and recently brought on Tom and Jason to handle the, the financial planning, uh, portion of his business, because Brian wants to retire. Brian did sell the property to Jason and, um, and leased the property back. And as soon as he vacates the property, that special permit goes away, and this business goes away. Um, so Sean, Dana, Tom, uh, i- i- are going to be looking elsewhere, uh, to, to set up shop. So, uh, it's a little more than, uh, just a rezoning. What we're trying to do is preserve, uh, our local business. The, uh, a few things about the property. Uh, we did submit the, the rezoning plan. Uh, it just simply, it's twenty-seven thousand, uh, plus or minus, uh, square feet. It's at the corner of Middlesex Turnpike, uh, and Concord Road. Uh, the, uh, neighborhood, uh, Brian, who is with us on, um, on Zoom this evening, has seen many changes to this neighborhood over the last twenty-two years. Um, there's, uh, Google Earth comparisons from oh-five to, to the present, uh, it, uh, up, up on the screen, and you can see, uh, Middlesex Turnpike's been widened. Uh, Concord Road's been widened. Uh, in addition to, uh, increased in, in lanes, the zoning has, has changed significantly. And the, uh, nature of that neighborhood has changed considerably as well. Uh, this may be a little difficult to see, but the zoning is quite interesting in, in this particular area. Um, the locus is, uh, right under, uh, RD and the word conquered. It's, uh, highlighted in, in, in yellow. Um, behind that, in green, is a multifamily, uh, residential zone. Um, uh, two doors down from, uh, Brian, uh, Jason's property is a neighborhood, uh, is a, uh, property zone for neighborhood business. Those are the offices for the, uh, multifamily, uh, use. Uh, across the street is, uh, is, um, all in industrial. And as you move closer to, uh, Route three, uh, if you recall, there's a project, a veterans home that's being proposed. Uh, and behind that is the, uh, nursing, nursing home. So, uh, again, Brian's seen significant changes. The, the neighborhood's been commercialized. You're all familiar with, uh, the Federal Street area. You rezoned it, uh, that's highlighted in red here. So we expect some, uh, changes in, in, in that area as well. Uh, very simply put, the neighborhood i- is more co- commercialized than it was when Brian started doing, uh, business uh, at one six, one sixty-four. Also worth noting, a little bit of history of this property. On the property is a house that was constructed in eighteen twelve. Uh, it's known as the, uh, Joseph Jakewood House. Um, and, uh, it was registered with the, uh, State, um, Historical Commission uh, by Mr. Sterns in nineteen seventy-three, and it's noted for its federal architecture. Uh, its, um, uses are noted as nursing home, single-family dwelling, and, and at one time, it might have been a tavern. Its significance is architecture. Interestingly, commerce, uh, is a significant, uh, value uh, and, uh, healthcare and medicine because of, uh, what it, uh, what it served. Um, this is the sec- quickly, the second sheet of that registration. Uh, for several years prior to World War Two, it was a nursing home. Uh, and, uh, there's some thought, originally, it was, uh, zoned business. Uh, when, uh, Bill Ricker first adopted zoning, we've done significant research. We can't find where it went into business, uh, zone and not a business zone. Uh, but, um, it's one of several federal type homes that have been built in, in Bill Ricker. So, uh, there is some, uh, support in the master plan. Uh, two thousand and eighteen master plan from both an economic development standpoint and from a historical, uh, preservation standpoint, um, uh, in, in the master plan supports this. Uh, quickly, I'm not going to go through all of this, but, um, in the master plan, uh, the, the town, uh, the, the authors of the master plan, um, discuss an economic development strategy. And one of the things, uh, the town should be doing is, uh, considering what needs to be done to retain, not only attract additional business, but retain uh, business. So in this respect, we're asking, uh, to rezone so we can retain, uh, this business uh, here in town. The master plan talks about promoting better and higher uses of, of these commercial centers. Again, I consider this to be a com- commercial center, given the commercial nature of the neighborhood. Uh, and I suggest that, uh, rezoning this to neighborhood business is a, uh, higher and better use for this particular property, given the fact that it's on Concord Road, given the fact that it's surrounded by industrial and other neighborhood business properties. Uh, the master plan goes on to talk about, uh, identify, uh, the town should be identifying, identifying needed amenities and targeting businesses or industries, uh, that would be beneficial to the community. Here we have, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh, an outfit that, that serves, uh, that, that's quite an amenity for many of the, uh, uh, people, uh, here in, here in town. Uh, because of the growing population, uh, you've all heard, uh, you just had a long discussion about the need for elderly housing, and that's due to the fact that our population is, is aging. And I don't believe for a fact you're not fifty-five yet, Mike, but, uh, anyway. Um, so that's from the economic, uh, portion. Oh, fantastic, okay. But- Uh, yeah, because I'm, because I am elderly. I, I, I just thought, I just thought this and the beard was different. Um, there's, there's support, uh, in the, uh, master plan from the preservation of a historic resource, uh, perspective as well. Um, you know, balancing, uh, uh, historic, uh, uh, resources while allowing for, uh, business and change has always been a challenge. Uh, but this is a nice fit, because this building, uh, this eighteen-twelve building, uh, makes for a nice, uh, nice office space. And, uh, I'm not going to get into all of this, uh, stuff here, but I, I would like to say that Jason has uh, a, a pretty good track record, uh, of, of preserving and maintaining, uh, historic, uh, buildings. Uh, and, um, what Jason did, uh, through his LLC in two thousand and twenty-two, purchased the Bowery House in Newton Lower Falls. It's a house that was built in seventeen fifty-five. Uh, it's been off, in, in office to his, uh, his business North Atlantic Investment Partners since two thousand and sixteen. Um, and, and you'll see that, uh, this is one of the oldest buildings in Newton Lower Falls. But the, probably one of the reasons it's still standing is the fact that it was converted to office space, taking the burden, uh, off of a homeowner to preserve uh, and put it on the shoulders of, uh, a, a, a small business or business entity. So, uh, Jason has a track record of, uh, historic preservation, and he, he's no stranger to that. Um, why the neighborhood business, uh, zoning district? Um, the master plan makes a nice, funny comment about neighborhood business, or an interesting comment, that this particular zoning district is intended to accommodate small retail and small service establishments and can be found in various neighborhoods throughout the town. Now, we saw one, uh, two doors down, uh, zone for neighborhood business. If we go down the Middlesex Turnpike near the lake, there's another, uh, neighborhood business, uh, down there. So it's a very useful zoning tool, uh, for this board and, and the town uh, when it comes to accommodating small businesses or boutique businesses like, uh, the business the, these folks have. So, uh, it's the least intrusive of our commercial zones, uh, uh, industrial, commercial, uh, and, and gen- general business. Um, somebody made the comment earlier, uh, tonight, that this article popped up last year and was, uh, before you for consideration. Uh, at that time, there were concerns from the neighbors about, uh, what, what use could, uh, be? Uh, if we rezone to neigh- neighborhood, uh, business, if this, this operation shuts down. Uh, and they've done some soul searching, and we've put this restrictive covenant together. Um, and, um, in, in consideration of the property being, uh, zoned neighborhood business, the, uh, what's prohibited on site, once this is recorded, will be retail stores, repair shops, fast food order establishments, motels, hotels, banks, bowling alleys, indoor amusement, tradesman shops, research faci- research facilities, storage of commercial vehicles and trailers, drive-through lanes, gas stations and service stations. These are all things that people had concerns about when this popped up last year. So what we offer is this restrictive covenant because all these gentlemen want to do and want to do is just continue providing this service to the town and keep doing business there. So we have to go to the Finance Committee. So I had Mr. Spidey way in as to the tax consequence. And he's telling us if the use of the property is committed 100% to, to commercial use, in this case, office use, the taxes will increase to $19,510 initially, which would be another $9,000 in tax revenue. So that's something that the Finance Committee is going to be interested in. Brian was able, and Jason were able to get support from, support letters from two critical neighbors, the Jennifer Farmer. The Farmers have owned that property right next door. And on the other side of the Farmer property is the, is that other neighborhood business zoned property. And Jen Farmer weighs in and says, throughout the 20 years, the accounting and financial advisory business has operated, and they've had no complaints whatsoever. And again, the hope is that nothing changes. Okay? And in fact, they've been wonderful neighbors, and they strongly support the rezoning. That's critical because that's right beside the property. The next letter of support is from the folks that live across Middlesex Turnpike on the corner of Middlesex and Conquered Road. And quickly, they're at 401 Middlesex Turnpike. And they write to express their full support for rezoning the property. So we respectfully ask that, that you folks give us a positive recommendation as we head to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great presentation, even at 11 o'clock at night.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I, this is a great article, great plan, great endeavor, and will receive my full, great support. Thank you.
Thank you, Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Dantori.
Oh.
Sure.
Everyone will get a chance to speak. We start with the board members, applicant, board members, residents, staff, board, vote. Only one person has spoken so far. 100%. We just went through almost three hours. And I started the meeting the same way with the applicant. And then I went to the board. And a few of the board members said, I'd like to hear what the residents have to say first. And so after I heard our board members, we went to the residents. That's exactly the process I'm doing here. It's how I have run all these meetings for the last year and a half as the chair. We start with our board members because we've done our due diligence and looked into all this information. So we want to hear what our board members have to say. Then we hear our residents. Then I go back to the board members so that we can all reflect on what you had to say. Is that okay? All right.
Mr. Ventresko. And based on your cogent input, I could change my opinion. So anyway.
Mr. Ventresko, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have no problem changing the zoning for this. As I mentioned to you before, I do have some issues with the, how restrictive the restrictive covenant is. You know, with some of the things like the bank, that sort of thing. So that's some of my concerns, is too restrictive. And then, of course, the conversation we had earlier, that it may not matter.
Yeah, I, they don't want to do anything else with the property. This is it. You know, it's 27,000 square feet. Not likely a drive-through is going to go through. And not, highly unlikely a bank goes through there. I understand you want to keep your options open as to, you know, again, maybe looking at a different use. But that's all these, these, these folks want is, and they're committing themselves to this restrictive covenant so that Sean, Dana, Tom, and Jason can continue working there. So.
And that's fine, and I very much appreciate that. But as we all know, it doesn't last forever, right? So they could get older, say, hey, I'm done, they sell it, and it ends up in someone else, and they want to do something different. Okay. So that, my concern is that the restriction was a little too restrictive.
Okay.
You know, that was, it's a concern. It's all it is.
I got it. I appreciate it.
It's not being, I'm saying yes or no on this. It's just, it's a concern that that's a little too restrictive. Like I said, I have no problem with the zoning change, the better fit. I mean, we kind of look at the zoning map, it's just, it's all over the place in that neighborhood anyway.
Primarily commercial, yes.
Yeah. So that's, that's my concern right now. So I'd like to keep my options open and hear what the residents have to say. I'd like to hear, you know, and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just reserve my comment after the residents have spoken.
Perfect. Mr. Drabu.
Yeah, so the, so the reason why, I know, I know, Mr. Ventresko just said the bank. I don't think he was here for it, which was the opposition for it, was because of the concern that there was going to be a bank.
That's my understanding.
So, I mean, the whole point of having that restrictive covenant was to build trust with the residents to say, hey, listen, we just want to do what we were originally doing.
22 years.
That's what, it's just, here's a restrictive covenant. And worst-case scenario, it could also still be, I mean, it could be also a house, too, they could effectively sell to a resident. So it goes back to either being a house or what they're doing right now.
Correct.
So, I mean, it's not causing any, we already know what the traffic impact is because it's already currently what it is, the traffic impact. And, and as you said, it would be adding about 10,000, close to, what, 9,000? 9,000 to 10,000 additional tax dollars. And it's keeping things the status quo.
Right.
So.
And preserving jobs.
Yeah, preserving jobs, keeping the same thing. I still want to hear what the residents have to say. I know you guys waited here for four hours still to have the thing. And, and I was, and you know, so, and you have your say here. If, you know, whether for or against, I don't know what yours is. But yeah, so, but for me, this just doesn't, this seems more of a net benefit. I'm trying to figure out, and, and hey, like, I understand. I know Anthony Ventresko was saying was too restrictive. But I'm like, well, if it's making everyone happy.
And we're okay with it being overly restrictive, so.
All right. That's all, that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I remember that last year, Jim, this came before us. And that was, this list is essentially what most of the residents objected to and what they had a problem with. I think this goes a long way to helping that, hopefully it does at least. My only question, and as an attorney, I'm going to ask you, if somebody came to you in the future, or, you know, maybe Jim Dangor III.
Yeah.
As far as removing this, what would be the process?
To remove this?
Yeah.
I, I.
It says it's in perpetuity, but is there a process through either town meeting, the select board, or to lift it?
I, I think the, you'd need the, I think it would be through, it could very well be through town meeting it. I'd have to think that.
In other words, it would go through a similar process to what we're doing today. The covenant just couldn't be lifted, as we saw a few minutes ago.
Right. And the whole intent of it is that it runs with the property. That is correct. The mechanics of withdrawing it, I haven't dove too deep into it because that's not what we're, you know.
That's not what you're doing today. I get that. But as, you know, Tony just brought up, could it happen in the future? Possibly, but it would be go through a similar process. In other words, to go through the exact same process that we're going through today to put it on, is it would be to take it off.
Right.
It's not just a snap of the fingers.
That, that's correct. Now, remember, a lot of those uses in this restrictive covenant are uses that appear in other zoning districts, like the service station.
Yep.
For instance, it's not anything that's ever going to go there, but that was a concern of somebody's.
Wouldn't fit there, in my opinion.
Pardon me?
I don't think a service station would fit there.
No, and like, and it's 27,000 square feet, not ideal for, for any other particular, particular use. But a lot of the uses are, do require special permits. So there's another layer of protection there anyway.
It's not just simply the future owner doing something different.
That's right. Residential and office use are permitted uses by right.
Perfect. Thank you.
You asked the question about removal of the restrictive covenant. That was going to be one of my thoughts. But this is why I didn't support it last year was because there was nothing restricting this property. We heard from the residents that it could be any of these once we zone it. And that's why it didn't get the support from the board last year.
Right.
I think this change here speaks to the level of the applicant, the petitioner, wanting to meet the residents halfway.
Correct.
Now, we obviously have a group back here that we'll hear from in the next minute. And we want to hear what they have to say. So thank you, Mr. Dangor.
Thank you.
So, well, follow the order, anybody in the front. I mean, you guys are obviously the petitioners, but. Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Jim Donovan. I live at 408 Middlesex Turnpike. I have lived at 408 Middlesex Turnpike since 1954. So I've been there 71 years, long time, seen a lot of change. During that time, my children grew up, they moved out. The neighborhood became largely a group of elderly people. Those elderly people are now selling their homes. Young people are moving in with children. We now have five families in my neighborhood, from where the railroad tracks used to be to Conquered Road, that have small children, including one of the people who wrote that particular letter stating how they're supportive of this. They have two small children. Now, the, one of the biggest problems we have in our neighborhood is traffic. And believe me, I'm sure you've all been down Middlesex Turnpike. But I went home last Wednesday, and I have to back my truck into my driveway. I can't get out otherwise. I'm sitting in my driveway, watching the traffic at quarter or four in the afternoon, backed up almost halfway down to the hill. I'm sitting there, and all of a sudden, I see four cars pull out from a line of traffic, cross the double yellow line, start coming up the wrong side of the road at a high rate of speed to get down the road and into that section where the road becomes two lanes instead of one. Now, they're going at a higher rate of speed because they're trying to beat the people coming down the street to get into that lane before they ever had on collision. This goes on every single night. This is continuous. It does not stop. When I get home Friday night, I backed into my driveway. I sat there for a while, a big trash truck, back about seven or eight cars. He pulls out onto the wrong side of the street, comes flying down the line on the wrong side of the street to get into that lane again. This is one of those giant trash trucks. This goes on all the time. This is a safety issue. Now, I realize these, we have, we have lived in this neighborhood with Brian, who's been a great neighbor, great friend. And he really hasn't caused any additional traffic or anything. His business that he had for 23 years, really, I think Brian told me most of it was done over the internet. But now, the new petitioners are coming before you to have this property rezoned, as Brian did three years ago. You voted against it, and thank you at that time. And they want to change this again into an office building. Now, what's an office building? It's offices with an S. That's plural. So we've got a house that used to have a resident in it with a small addition, where, when I was a little kid, the Ulos lived in that small addition. They currently run the business out of that small addition. Now, they want to take the house and make it into an office building. Well, how many offices can we fit in that building? Oh, I don't know, maybe two on the first floor, two on the second. How about three on the first floor and three on the second? So we could have maybe between four and six additional tenant spaces in that house that could be used to be rented out to provide income, to pay the mortgage, which I, which has got to be very high, this piece of property, according to the, according to what I've been on the research, was just recently sold for over a million dollars. It's a lot of money. Now, anybody, if this doesn't go through, the proponent, I would assume, is going to have to sell this property to somebody who's willing to pay over a million dollars for it as a residential piece of property. I mean, that's just a fact of life, right? Now, if it doesn't go through, what's going to happen to the business? Are they going to go out of business? I would think three, two very smart businessmen, who have built this business, made it thrive, are not going to close the business and lay off their employees. What are they probably going to do? They're probably going to move the business into one of many empty buildings in this town. The other night, my wife and I went down to Augustus. We're sitting there having an ice cream, across the street, big office building. What does it say? Office space for rent. I work for the town. I'm sorry, I came dressed this way. We had, I'm an electrician, we had an emergency at 3:00. I had to go with National Grid, get the power back on to our intake, so I wasn't able to go home and change. So on my way back to the plant to come here, I go down 3A to take a left onto Trouberville Road. And what do I drive by? A building, a beautiful building that used to have a pharmacy. Big sign on it, office space for rent. There's plenty of office space in this town where these gentlemen could continue their business. I don't think it's fair to say that they're going to have to close their business and lay off their employees. I think that's kind of unreasonable to think that would occur. Maybe they would. I can't say they won't, but it just doesn't make good business sense. The biggest problem we have is traffic, and it is out of control. There's nothing this board can do to stop the traffic. The land across the street, which is waiting for the development by that scientific research company, that's coming. That's going to add more traffic, nothing you can do to stop it. But you, but we, basically, our neighborhood is in the shape of a letter T. And the first person in the T, these gentlemen here, are requesting to have that land rezoned so they can put an office building in, add more traffic. Got to add more traffic. I mean, you know, it's just the fact of life. Now, they're coming before you, but they have two abutters on either side. Now, what's to stop their abutters from coming before you? Now, they're not here tonight. I understand that. But those abutters, one of whom owns a construction company, does not run out of his house. But suppose he came before you and said, I'd like to get my land rezoned, too. Wouldn't that be spot zoning if you said no? Of course, you're going to have to say yes.
Depends on what he's asking for.
Same thing there.
So that's an office building?
Right, but he doesn't have any deed restrictions.
But, but again, we're talking about an office building, not a trade shop, not a bank, not a drive-through.
Right. I understand that.
I mean, obviously, one of the follow-up questions I have is if it becomes a commercial space and this all becomes commercial, how are they meeting the zoning for parking? Because right now, they have parking there, but do they have enough parking for the square footage they have?
I don't know. That would be up to the building department, I guess, when they come forward. Or, or to you, you know, to find out if they could put that number of offices in there.
Oh, 20,000 cars that go by your house every day? I'm just going to use a fictitious number. They might have 20 cars come to their office space a day. We're talking about 1/10 of 1% of the cars. And I don't think that's going to drastically change the, you know, the.
Who would go in that office space? Could a, could a dentist go in that office space? Could a, I'm asking that.
Dentist has one patient an hour. Dentist has one patient an hour.
Maybe not, you ever been to a dentist office and see how many people are waiting in the waiting room?
But there's only one person in the chair.
Oh, no, not if there's more than one dentist. I, I'm just giving you some, some thoughts that I have. And again, I, I know you guys are trying to do what's best for the town, best for these gentlemen here, and best for the residents. I'm pointing out things that, once you start the ball rolling, it's not gonna go backwards. That land is never going back to residential, and I honestly believe you're gonna see more currently residentially zoned properties in that, in our neighborhood start to change. I believe that's a very strong possibility. They're not before you tonight, but I think it's easy to see that that could start. And that's what we're worried about, because this is our neighborhood, we live here. And that's why we came before you before, we're very concerned about our neighborhood. And we've been living with Brian for twenty-three years, a great friend, a great neighbor, never had a problem. But now they're coming before you, not as a residential with a, a request to have a, a home business. They're coming before you to change the whole makeup of that end of the neighborhood. And if you go along with it, and town meeting goes along with it, I sincerely feel that it's gonna expand. And that will be detrimental to our neighborhood. And as I said, these gentlemen could, if they wished, move their business anywhere in town and continue to be successful, their customers will follow them, no matter where they go, because they give good service. They've been great people that have, you know, all these years down the street. So, I mean, you know, when Attorney Dan Goris says, you know, they might have to close the business and lay off their employees, I think that's probably kind of unlikely. I, I mean, if they had to move their business, they could. They don't have to, if you, you know, give them the green light to move, move ahead, I mean, who knows? This is why we, as a neighborhood, are here, bringing these things up, asking you to consider this, as though you lived in our neighborhood and it was your next-door neighbor. Each one of you should say to yourself, what would be in my best interest in that case? And, I don't know whether you agree with me or not, but just give that some thought as you think about what's in the best interest of these gentlemen, who certainly deserve to continue to run their business, in the best interest of us, the neighbors, who are gonna live with whatever is decided. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Name's John Guaranty, live at four oh four Middlesex Turnpike, which is, I am probably the largest of butter to the property in question. I just want you to take a second and think, what if somebody was deciding to take your neighborhood away? Your home? Your friends? And that's what it starts when you change the zoning. I'm a newcomer to the neighborhood, and I've lived there thirty years. Very happy, very happy with Bilirica, put up with a little traffic, but I bought that when I bought the house. I just, think a minute, if you were in our situation and saying, "We are gonna start losing our neighborhood because we're changing the zoning." It just doesn't make any sense to me. There are other places for people to go to, to run a business. They don't need to start coming down Middlesex Turnpike. Just think about that. Your home, and all of a sudden, this is gonna start happening to you, and it's gonna continue. It's like a, you know, an army marching down the road. Once you change the zoning, it creates a whole different situation. And it starts not becoming my home anymore, you know, and I'm sure that, um, most of my neighbors feel the same way. It, it just doesn't seem right to change the zoning, people can go other places. There's plenty of buildings over here that I, I drive by and drive in the parking lot, and they're empty. Why do we have to start encroaching upon my home? And my, I, I'm not sure, is it, is it all about the money? If this, your home, your neighborhood means something to you? Just think about if you were in my shoes, and somebody decided now, gee, it's time to put a bank in there or any of the things will make it commercial. Now, we, once you make it commercial, then, then it's open game for anybody to sell their home and somebody else can start making something else out of it than our neighborhood. I don't know how you would feel if it was your neighborhood that suddenly is being put into this position. I've been very happy in Bilirica for thirty years, I think I've tried to live a model life here. Put up with a little traffic, but I bought that when I bought the house. Just look at it from our point of view, and my neighbor's point of view, that this is a home. This is our neighborhood, these are our friends. And what is it zoning it commercially going to do? It certainly allows them a lot more options. And I'd like to think I'd spend the rest of my days here, and my wife would enjoy the house after I'm gone, because I assume I'm going before her. She says that's not really true. So just think about it as, what would it be if you were in my position, and this was your home, and this was starting to happen to you? Because I just think it's, it's like a weed, it'll start growing. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Just, just a question, though. Well, no, the only thing is, is you mentioned the bank, but the thing is, is they have a restrictive covenant that prevents the bank. Or prevents that in general, so it's preventing all these uses, because that is meant, it's meant, they're, they're trying to just say, hey, this is just the existing, you know, the existing business, and they're just, to, to say what's going on right now. They're not, they're not trying to change with anything else, that's why they put the covenant in for.
Not a very trusting person. It's just like, it's like anything else, how which will, will zone it residential, commercial, but we're really not gonna change anything.
Well, it's, it's a restrictive, a restrictive covenant, though, is, is like, it's legal, so it's like, e- even if they sell the property, it would be, if there's restrictions on it, those people would still have to abide by that restrictive covenant. So it's, it's.
I don't tend to be a very trusting person when I.
Well, I, well, here's, here's the thing, though, is, is that, I've heard nothing but praise to the current neighbor in the neighborhood, everyone's like, he's, he's a great guy. And he comes before with a restrictive covenant to try to address your concern. So, I think that there should be at least some trust to say, everyone's like, this guy's the Mr. Rogers of business people, and here's a restrictive, well, not, not a Mr. Rogers, but you get what I'm saying. It's, it's, it's a restrictive, with a restrictive covenant that's meant to address at least your concerns regarding that. So that's the only thing that, you know, so when you ask, if, I'm thinking in your shoes, I would, I would be like, I would be similar to some of the neighbors in the, that said the letters of support, which was just, oh, all right, they're just maintaining the status quo. There's a very big difference between, you know, having, um, you know, a massive developer that's looking to make a huge, huge project and hasn't consulted really with residents versus, like, this guy, he looks like he's attempting at least.
Well, you'll probably be around here to see what possibly could happen to your neighborhood, to your home area. I probably won't be. But I, I guarantee you, it'll have a different picture ten years from now than it has now. Um, it, it's, it's starting, and it just, I just don't know how you'd feel if all of a sudden you were put in my position. I'm not a very trusting person, you know, just, once the army starts moving, may not be tonight, may not be tomorrow, may not be next year. But it's the beginning of the erosion of our neighborhood. And, and people that we live with and talk to and, and share bread with, that this is, this is just the beginning. And I just wonder if this were to happen in your neighborhood, how it would feel? Because I know how it feels to me. After, after thirty years of being very comfortable in Bilirica, I'm now getting uncomfortable. Thank you for listening to me.
Any else?
Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for your time. Peter Foddy, four oh six Middlesex Turnpike. Uh, we've been in the neighborhood now for eighteen years. And I use the word neighborhood strongly because it is our residence, it is our home. We raised two older boys there, at, at, older ages when we moved in eighteen years ago, so they're up and gone. But it's, it's, to me, it's a residence, it's a residential neighborhood. We're surrounded by all the things that, that were mentioned in the presentation. We've got the intersection, we've got all these things on Concord Road that are around us. We've got Middlesex, um, crossing behind us, we've got commercial on the other side, on the, on the westbound side as well. The property that was, um, referred to, um, on Middlesex Turnpike, that is another business, is much further down the road than our section of the neighborhood, between Concord Road and Sterns, or even going up the hill to Fellowship and all that. It'd be nice to be able to, because there was talk earlier about residential and bringing in more residents and having more residential homes. Why would we want to counterproductive that with taking away residential areas like this? Unfortunately, that house in question that wants to be rezoned is in a position that it butts to the houses in our neighborhood on Middlesex Turnpike. And the support that they are getting from some of the people in the neighborhood, again, I'm not gonna get into the details, because I don't know a hundred percent of the details, but we already know that person has plans to come forward. If this goes through, for this house, they're gonna come through for their house. And again, it looks like there could be, as referred to by my previous, uh, speakers, the domino effect, where all of a sudden, one house, then the next house, and then the next house. And then we've got hair salons and dentists, or whatever people wanna be able, people that can work out of their houses that I've seen for many, many years. And again, at the risk of being repetitive, think about your own homes, or your, members of your family that live in homes in different cities and towns, is this something that you would want to approach your neighborhood to start turning things over? The traffic issue will always be a traffic issue. It's gonna get worse once that gate gets opened on the other side of Concord Road and wherever it gets built there, and whatever's gonna be in there, that's gonna make things worse. So we're not picking on the one house, it's not, nothing, it's nothing personal. We wanna be able to keep our residents and keep a neighborhood together. And yes, there are now, finally, after the eighteen years we've been there, younger families are moving in. And it would be a shame to deny them to have a neighborhood for themselves that's residential and not apt to having all these other businesses come down and impede on their families. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Jason. Hi, I'm Jackie Pippin Cupp, and my husband and I live at four ten Middlesex Turnpike. I'll keep this very brief, because I know it's so late. There were, a few weeks ago, I heard the comment, "Oh, yes, change is hard." Well, I want you to realize that we're not against change, but just for the sake of change. What, I think what we feel is that our property is gonna be devalued, devalued. We, we don't like to think that we'll be getting less money for our homes if we should sell, for one thing. And, um, it's, it's just going to lessen our good quality of living. That's really what we're here for. And I hope you realize that it's not the role of the planning board, it's not your job to help somebody else make money, and that's what these people wanna do. And I also would like to know, who's gonna reimburse us when our property decreases the value? That's all I have to say, thank you so much.
Else?
Mr. Chair. Couple of quick follow-ups. Nothing's gonna change. The exterior of the building doesn't change, um, the business doesn't change, uh, nothing changes. So, it, it, they all, they all tell you, he's been a good neighbor, and he, he has a proven track record over twenty-two years. Brian goes away, Jason takes over, Brian's part of the business. Much of his business is remote, Brian goes into the annex, and Dana and Sean and Tom get out from doubling up offices in the annex and spread out in, in the house itself. So, nothing's gonna change with respect to the exterior, nothing's gonna change with respect to the operation of the business. Heard a lot about the slippery slope argument, that if you do this, others are gonna come forward. This is distinguishable from other situations, because it's a twenty-two-year track record of, of a successful business who's been mindful of the neighbors. So, I, I don't think that slippery slope argument applies in this, this situation. So, um, it, it, it's just maintaining the status quo, that, that's all this is. So, uh, again, we respectfully ask that you, you support the argument. And I, it, uh, the, the, the article with that restrictive covenant should, should take care of, alleviate a lot of fears. And, um, I, I don't believe you should have significant concerns about this slippery slope argument, because this situation is distinguishable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wake them up for a second, I don't have my mic. And Jamie, I'm sorry, I'll look down at our staff to wake them up and have them give us their, uh, input on this, uh, warrant article, and then we can move forward.
Absolutely, I thought it was a great presentation, the points on the master plan and how neighborhood business is typically applied were spot-on for the, the what-if scenarios and the potential changes. They've created this restrictive easement, sorry, restrictive covenant. If I can ask, at an informational session, it was described how it would be applied, can I just ask for that to be repeated again?
Uh, what?
How the restrictive covenant would work. You mentioned at a previous informational session, kind of, when it would be applied, or who would be the interested parties?
Yeah, so if we look at that restrictive covenant, when the zoning is passed, Jason signs it and it gets recorded at the registry of deeds, so it's preserved. Anyone who wants to do anything with that property would do a, uh, a, a property search at the registry of deeds and come across the restrictive covenant, and then move on, you know, somewhere else, after, after reading the restrictive covenant. You know, a pretty good example of how the restrictive covenants work, if, if you wanna lesson on how it works, maybe you talk to Chief Cole at the, the fire department, because Chief Cole was eyeing that, that old gas station across the street from Panera, and it has a restriction on it, that that property cannot be used for residential purposes, because it was a, a gas station. So what did the town do? They had to pull up stakes and move next door. So that's how a restrictive, uh, covenant works. It's recorded at the registry of deeds, and Jason will sign it, and I will record it. Or we can sign it, and I can put it in your hands with, with a copy of a recording check, and it gets recorded.
And he's the interested party on it, and it would state in perpetuity?
It does state in perpetuity, that is correct.
Thank you.
We have heard our applicant. Any board members like a follow-up, Tony?
Um, be, because Brian is in, under a special permit, a home use occupation special permit that was granted to him, uh, in two thousand and three. Brian has sold the property, has leased the property back, and as soon, he's, he's retiring, and he's gonna move on. So when he moves, as soon as he moves out of that property, that special permit expires. Okay?
Motion, he's already moved out, that husband, Dan, he's sort of lying. I just arrived at tonight, you see the windows up, the plant, there's no furniture, is there, Alan?
He, he needs, it, it, it stops. It, it, it stops. So, in order to continue, for Tom to continue to work there, and Sean, and, and Dana, in that established business, um, they, they need to change the zoning to this office use, to, to neighborhood business. Again, the most least, uh, the most restrictive of all of our commercial. to, to neighborhood business. Again, the most least, uh, the most restrictive of all of our commercial zones. And, and again, it fits in with that commercialized area. So.
Get to a mic, Anthony? Thank you.
I don't know what Jamie just said. If.
Chris, any follow-ups?
I mean, no, not, 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 not really on that. Um, you know, just re, re, you know, rereading what Jennifer Farm said there. So, I mean, I mean, she has two kids and she's okay. Usually, usually people are just like concerned about the children, but she seems okay with that. So I don't have any.
They had to come before us and that doesn't guarantee anything.
Yeah, he's, he's paying rent at the place. He's still a tenant. He's still a tenant. Is he a tenant?
The primary resident in the house.
Oh, there's no furniture.
The house has been empty for a while. There's been no one living there. The permit has been violated in that case. So they're playing games. There's all kinds of fluff in all the things that I read about this whole rezoning and stuff like that. And again, to reiterate, it still affects our property values as well. Again, put yourself in our shoes. We do not want our property values going down when we go to sell our homes. Thank you.
All right, Jason Tholander. Um, you know, I own the property. Brian Gogan is the primary resident in that property. He has a special permit, you know, to lives, live as a primary resident and then work in the office space that's attached to the building. We have not violated that and we are trying to do everything in the most lawful way we possibly can, which is why we're going through this process to convert this to a neighborhood, uh, business zoning. Uh, we did not probably even have to do this. I don't think anyone would have, you know, known that there was any difference in what was going on on that property. We've, we've been working there under these same agreements for the past couple of years. There's going to be no change to, you know, the, what's going on on that property, you know, as we move forward. It's literally going to be less traffic at that property after Brian and I mean, no longer reside there. The only, right, which is why it's more quiet after they've, you know. Correct. They have moved their property out of the house, but they are still the tenants in that house, which is what we're trying to do right now, which is convert this to a neighborhood business.
Mixing words.
I'm not playing games. I'm telling the truth as best as I can. What we want to do is continue with things as the status quo and make everyone happy. That's really all we're trying to do. All of these restrictions that we've put in place are trying to meet you all the way, not halfway.
Make us happy. Don't change the zoning so long.
We.
Again, like the other pieces before, you didn't come and talk to us at all. None of you came to talk.
We're here. We're going through the process of collaborating with everyone here to make sure that we go through this the right way. Brian has reached out to everyone, communicated with everyone as best he can. As best he can.
Let's not have, we, we can't have this, right? Because it's a public hearing, so everything has to be said at the microphone so the people can hear it, so the recordings can happen. I, I can't allow the back and forth. So if you want to get up and reboot Jason, please stand up and, 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 and.
Jason Tholander, I just want to say that I really do understand the concerns and the what-ifs. We are doing everything we can to address the what-ifs and the concerns of anyone else. All we want to do is continue to operate as financial planning and accounting professionals in that building. There's, we need the space from the primary residents for all of the accountants to have their own offices. We're not adding any new accountants, any new professionals, any new, you know, no need for any new parking spaces. There will be no more additional traffic by us rezoning this property and working in this property in the way that we are hoping to, uh, and, and just continuing, continuing to work there in the way that we have been already for twenty-three years in Brian's case, since twenty seventeen for Thomas's case, since twenty twenty-three, since I've been there. Like, we are doing whatever we can to make everyone happy. We really are. There's no other building that we want to work in. It would be very disruptive for the hundreds of financial planning clients and thousands of tax clients that we have to relocate and find a new office space. It's really unnecessary. This is the most beautiful building, you know, that we want to work in. We love this building. I, I, I'm thrilled and I've never been more excited. I've been an advisor for twenty-five years, never been more excited about any opportunity in my career than to work out of this building and back in the town that I was born in and I grew up in. You know, I played in Mrs. Pippin's backyard with her son Russ when I was growing up. My mom and you were, were good friends from church and I would never do anything that I thought would be detrimental to this town or to that neighborhood, ever. I only want to, you know, continue working with Thomas, you know, and, and all the other professionals and all the really wonderful clients that I've met over the past couple of years there. And, and we'll do whatever we can with restrictions, more restrictions if you need them, whatever we have to for us to continue working there in that building. I don't think the what-ifs will be a slippery slope, that other people will continue to do this. I, you know, the neighborhood has changed, you know, since I grew up here in the past five, ten years for sure. And who knows what the neighborhood is going to change into, you know, in the near future, across the street or whatnot. But what we're going to do is preserve the beautiful historic building, preserve the, the business that, you know, Thomas has been a part of and I have now been a part of for a few years and, and Brian built up over the past twenty-plus years. And that's really all we're trying to do. We're not trying to change anything. We're trying to preserve things as they are. Yeah, you know, I, I, I do respect your concerns and I, I, I want to acknowledge them. And, you know, I promise you, I promise you that we're not going to do anything to devalue your homes or, or to the detriment of your neighborhoods or, or this town. That's it.
I have, uh, either yourself or Mr. Dango or I have two follow-up questions. If this rezoning takes place, do they have to go in front of the select board to get a license for the business at the premises at that point or is that?
Nope.
Okay, so the business is there. Uh, second question is, what are your proposed business hours?
No different than they are now. Their current business hours. And as someone. The business hours are no different than they are now. A lot of our business is done over the phone. I'm there by appointment only and it's, you know, probably going to be once or twice a week that I'll be there meeting.
Does the office typically open and close?
Eight thirty to five.
Eight thirty to five.
So it's, it's, it's going to be a business hour operation. We're not going to be, you know, working till, I mean, having many clients there, late nights, obviously. You know, if you're doing some sort of financial audit, you could be there burning the midnight oil, right?
It'll be exactly.
Right. Right.
It'll be no different than it has been for the past twenty-three years. If anything, more virtual, more done via Zooms, but.
Just trying to think of the other questions that could come up with the neighbors about, you know, when is, you know, when are your offices going to be open? You know, obviously if it's a business that's open twenty-four seven, that's more detrimental than a business that is, you know, eight to five.
I've been a financial advisor for twenty-five years, had the office in Newton Lower Falls for ten years. My goal, my plan is to do this for another fifteen to twenty-plus years, God willing. I have fifteen-year-old twins that have expressed an interest in getting into this business with me. So they may, maybe, you know, I may be passing the baton to them at some point. And again, you know, I'm from this town. I, I, I want to be in this town. I want to be in that house. I think it's just a, 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 a perfect location with a lot of history, you know, for, for us, you know, professionally and, and personally for Thomas. So it's just, you know, we have an attachment there. Thomas has already joked about working in the, in the room where he's had, you know, Thanksgiving dinners and so on. I mean, that's his, Brian's his uncle. So it's, you know, we have a, we're all very familiar with this town and that property and, and working in that building is very important to us and staying in that building is very important to us. It would be heartbreaking. I know it would be devastating for Brian too, is, if we weren't successful in accomplishing this too. And I, I don't want that to happen. So.
Thank you.
Just struck Tuesday.
You know, we've got two minutes left.
All right, mine says twelve o'clock.
You got one minute. All right, go.
I'm Harold Pippin, live at four ten, Middlesex Turnpike. I just have one question. Assuming that, you know, the, Brian's business and everything is all right. I mean, it's going through it. What if, let's say the guy on the other, the other corner, okay, wants to get his, because you see, if you, you know, I live there, so I see his trucks in and out of there. He's got them fenced in, but, you know, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to know that he's running his business out of that, uh, house. If he wants to come back and if he wants to do, uh, you know, what Brian has done, that's no problem. Do we have to come back, we as neighbors have to come back and fight him too now?
It would be a public hearing, yes.
So we'd have to come back and fight cat, tooth and nail to.
It, it would be a slightly different situation. These people do have a over twenty-plus year standing business license that they've actively worked out of that property. Your neighbor doesn't. They don't have that history with the town. They don't have that history with you guys, right? There would be a brand-new undertaking and that is not what we have here tonight. These people are basically asking to keep the use as is and, and allow their people the property and base work versus, you know, being stuck in a small addition.
Yeah. No, I understand that. I just, I just wanted to.
Board would look at it.
The future.
Right.
Okay.
I believe our board would look at those applications differently because they don't have the history of running a successful business that has been friendly to the neighborhood for over twenty years.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you.
Different type of business too. All right. I turn into a pumpkin. I don't know what I'm doing. I don't want to ask, but I will say, any last thoughts? I'll give everybody thirty seconds. Okay. And Zoom, Catherine, Zoom just in case.
Chair, there are no hands raised.
There are no hands. Is there even anybody here? Yeah, there's a couple of people still following us. Okay. Uh, I'll leave that to you, Mr. Drew.
Might be asleep also. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on Article thirty-nine. Thirty-nine, thank you.
Okay, uh, seconded by Tony. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Close the public hearing.
That was to close the hearing.
That just to close the hearing.
All set?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. The board recommend Article thirty-nine to town, to fall town meeting.
Second. And seconded, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, please say aye. That is a six-zero support from your planning board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Have a good night, uh, good morning, I guess, folks. Have a good Tuesday. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
No, you hold on. Still have town meeting. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for your part.
Yes.
Yep.
It's owning and it doesn't, um.
It's not housing.
What's that? Yeah, hell, the business going home.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night. Still have town meetings. This is unusual.
This is extra late tonight, yes.
There's nothing under other business.
Mr. Chairman, we'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
You can call for the nose.
Um, and I also did fail to mention, our next regularly scheduled meeting has been moved to October sixteenth, which is a Thursday, starting at five thirty PM. So all those in favor of the adjournment again, aye. Anybody not in favor? No, of course not. Have a great night, Bill Ricker. Thank you.